Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees Work Session for Tuesday, February 27, 2018. And will the clerk please call the roll?
She will. Dr. Feenster?
I'm here.
Trustee Frankel?
I'm here.
Katie Holland?
Here.
Scott Kelly? Absent. John Mayer here. Trustee Raymond?
Here.
Here. Angie Taylor. Dr. Taylor, excuse me.
That's okay. I'm here. Good morning.
And our student representative is excused due to commitment at class.
All right. And trustee Kelly did say he was running 10 minutes late, so he's expected. Great, thank you. So we do have a quorum, and next we'll move to the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd like to ask our Chief of Police, Jason Trevino, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. We will move on to public comment. And JJ, we have some public comment this morning?
We do. David Carter.
Good morning, Mr. Carter. Good morning, Mr. Carter. You have three minutes. Thank you.
I understand. Good morning, trustees, WCSD employees, and fellow citizens. I am David W. Carter, an elected member of the State Board of Education, District 2, representing among 10 other counties, the county of Washoe. As of the first of this month, I am also a resident of Reno. And my comments reflect my opinions as a resident of this county. By the way, I am also an MBA, MBA in financial management, and I spent 25 years in school district finance. I am calling upon every trustee of the Washoe County School Board who has been involved in any vote which supported pay increases on the contracts of our past and current county school superintendents to resign. My charge is fiscal irresponsibility. I read in the Reno Gazette Journal this morning that the district is eliminating positions. I applaud this move. However, more needs to be done. As of the most current information from Transparent, Nevada, in 2016, the governor earned salary and benefits of $185,000. Mrs. Davis shows no information submitted since 2013. From news reports, I recall that her salary and benefits were more than twice that of the governor. There are over 600 employees in this district earning more than $100,000 in salary and benefits. Many are teachers whom I assume have reached the top of the pay scale with 30 years of service, but then have had equivalent approximately 1/3 of their salary. There were too many employees to review and separating administrators from a teacher. But assuming even 200 principals and vice principals, 200 teachers, you would have at least 200 administrators making more than $100,000. I retired after health issues from Capistrana Unified in California. The size of that district was comparable, 63 schools, 49,000 enrolled. The superintendent's salary and benefits were similar to those that I have seen selected by the current superintendent. There were two major differences. The graduation rate for students there was 97%, significantly higher. Plus, the income of district residents is much higher. Homes sell for a minimum of $500,000, many for more than $1 million. When we rented in 2012, our rent was $221,50 a month for a 900-square-foot apartment. That is a big difference. The revenues for the 2016 seventh year were $482 million, of which approximately 286 came from local property taxes. They received the state minimum. I will close by saying we cannot afford a high salary. If we need to have every employee making less than the lieutenant governor with his salary and benefits, that will save our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And thank you for your service on the State Board of Education. JJ?
Jenny Smith.
Welcome, Ms. Smith. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Jenny Smith, and I am the math department leader at McQueen High School. I'm here to ask you to consider protecting the position of the math interventionist at McQueen. We currently have Brandy Davenport as a teacher on special assignment, who is gifted to us by the assessment department. I understand that you may discuss, may be discussing cutting her position as part of the budget cuts this morning, so I'd like to give you a few reasons to keep her at McQueen. Since Brandy has been assigned to McQueen, we have successfully done the following: implemented a standards-based approach to teaching and grading in our Algebra I courses; implemented a research-based responsive remediation system for students in Algebra I; gone from 40 freshmen receiving algebra support during first semester to 304 freshmen receiving algebra support, and that's out of 365 freshmen enrolled in Algebra I; allowed for fluid movement in and out of algebra support on a daily basis instead of having a rostered class; we've decreased our students receiving Fs from 21% to 14% based on the third quarter academic warnings, which translates to 25 children receiving an F; we've offered math support to our special populations, which are ELL and special education, who are not enrolled in math support due to scheduling reasons. This is only because Brandy can push into those classes. Since we've moved to the standards-based teaching and grading system with responsive remediation, we have seen a huge change in our students, parents, and teachers. Our students are excited to attend algebra support and oftentimes verify the times and periods with their teachers to be sure they have not missed it. They no longer view algebra support as a punishment, but as an opportunity for learning. When absent, they ask to attend makeup sessions. Our parents are excited to hear that their students can receive algebra support and still maintain enrollment in a freshman seminar. Our students are taking ownership of their own learning and are proud of their improvements. Students have stopped Brandy in the hall and asked if she will be in the algebra support class and actually said, "Thank you for your help." Imagine that. My teachers are organized and energized about seeing this growth and enthusiasm from the students. Most importantly, we are seeing a shift in the students' attitudes and mindsets towards learning. They no longer think they have already failed in the first few weeks or after one bad test. They know there is always opportunity for improvement. They are demonstrating a growth mindset that I have never seen before in my 17-years teaching career. Of course, this is a team effort and takes work from McQueen's math teachers and administrators, but we cannot be pulling it out without our teacher on special assignment. She is currently creating the curriculum for our Algebra I support classes, including our standards-based tests. I've already sent each board member an email describing our transition to our standards-based mastery system, and please feel free to contact me with any additional questions. I am politely asking that you consider preserving McQueen's math intervention position, which is currently a teacher on special assignment. If we can have her for one more year, we can fully implement this successful system, which can be embedded in McQueen's culture. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith, and thank you to your whole team for the great results at McQueen.
Thank you.
Brandy Davenport. Welcome, Ms. Davenport. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Superintendent Davis and Board of Trustees, thank you for letting me speak today. I want to add a little bit more to what Jenny has just said. Like she said, last semester, there were two algebra support classes that only supported 40 students. These students would be the only ones that were getting supported during the day. This year, this semester, in the six weeks that we have been implementing this new program, we have been able to help 304 out of the 365 Algebra I students. She gave you different numbers, but 7% of the freshmen have, no longer have failure notices from last year. Not only have the Algebra I teachers seen the results in the responsive remediation, but the Algebra II honors classes have also seen a lot of changes. In the first unit of the semester, the average last year for all four sections of Algebra II honors on the first test was a 76%. With only the change of, the little change of doing checks for understanding so that kids know what they know right then, without remediation, the average went up to an 80%. These are the same tests from last year to this year. After the students did a focused remediation and a retake on just the standards they didn't understand, their average went to a 91%. By taking out the quizzes during the unit and replacing those with short checks for understanding, the teachers have found that they not only have their students being able to know more quickly where they are struggling, the teacher is able to have more time to do instruction with those students and less time testing the students. While the teachers' administration are on board with these systematic changes, they do not have enough time in the day to be able to make these changes happen. While I'm on campus, I am helping with three different periods of remediation, one of which is EL students that I cannot pull for a regular remediation. I'm organizing the tests so that they are based on the standards, writing the retake on those tests to be done in remediation, writing checks for understanding during the unit so they know where the students are in their learning at that point in time, then writing the remediation lessons that are to be done in the remediation class. Lastly, I'd like to talk about the changes in the demeanor of the students in remediation. While they are in for remediation, they are finding that they might have a small misunderstanding of the material they're learning, and instead of feeling defeated that they can't do their math, they realize they can. They don't fight coming to remediation because they feel that it is useful and relevant. I've had a freshman boy find me in the hall and stalk me with his group of friends and tell me thank you for the help and support. I have never, in 17 years of teaching, had a freshman boy ever tell me thank you. Maybe, maybe after they've graduated, they'll come and tell me that, but never during the day. Next year, the teachers will also be doing a new textbook, which I think that's going to take over their focus, and if I can stay and help them for at least one more year, that we can implement the new textbooks with the standards and all of this new material. I have a, I know you're done.
Thank you, Ms. Davenport. And again, thanks so much for the great work you're doing at McQueen.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, JJ. Okay. We'll move on to action to adopt the agenda. And is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some would be.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion by trustee Taylor, second by trustee Frankel. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to our big event of the day, which is discussion of our budget. And our first item is presentation and overview of the results of the community budget forums regarding the 2018-2019 budget. And with us, we have Chief Financial Officer Mark Mathers and Samantha Frederickson, Board Community Engagement Coordinator. And before you all get started, I know the board members will share with me in thanking you both for all of the work that was put into those budget forums. I think they were a huge success, and we very much appreciate all that work. So please go ahead.
Thank you. Samantha Frederickson, for the record. So I thought, you know, most of, all of you have been at one of the budget forums that occurred over the last month, but I wanted to present kind of an overview of what we saw at those forums, because each of you were not at each of those forums. So just to start, so we had five forums. I've listed them up here. The first one, January 17 at Trainer Middle School with Angela Taylor and Katie Simon-Holland. The second one at Double Diamond Elementary with Veronica Frankel, Scott Kelly, and Melina Raymond. The third one, Collin Ranch, January 24, Katie Simon-Holland and Melina Raymond. The fourth one, Incline Middle School, January 31 with Katie Simon-Holland and Scott Kelly. And the final one at Sun Valley on February 8 with Veronica Frankel, John Mayer, and Debbie Feenster. So I want to thank all of you for taking time out to participate and attend these, because I think that they were very positive, and I think the community is really appreciative of having the trustees out there, listening to their thoughts about the budget. So we had some pretty positive media coverage. I want to read a couple of quotes that, that community members who participated in these forums said. I think it was good that we did break into small groups, because it brought to light more of the voice of the community. And I think what was nice about this evening is that everyone had a chance for their voice to be heard. We were split into groups, and everyone was able to give their perspective, either as a staff member, a community member, or a parent. I think this is really positive feedback. The way that these community forums were structured was a little different, so that we could allow for real conversation and meaningful discussion among participants. And this was evidenced, I think, in the way that the media covered it. And you can see that we had, so our Facebook Live videos that went up on the 12th and the 17th, that was with President Katie Simon-Holland and trustee Angela Taylor. We got a lot of views, so you two did, did great with those, those Facebook Live videos. You can see that many people watched you. We had in total about 150 community members participating in all five of the forums. You can see the breakdown here. The first one was the smallest, at Trainer Middle School. You know, that one was held the day after school was coming back in session after winter break, so I think that played a little bit into it. But we still had a great discussion at that one, despite having 15 participants. And then they steadily rose. I think what was also really, really great about these forums was that they were very diverse. The participants were very diverse. We had students, I think, at just about every single forum, including our one eighth-grade student who came to, I think, three of them, that you guys probably all remember her. We had senators come to these, so elected officials were there. We had a lot of parents. We had a lot of teachers and staff, which I thought also brought a really great perspective. And I think it's important to note that these could not have been done without all of the departments listed up here. We had huge staff participation. Would not have been possible without having all of the experts in all of these individual areas at these forums, as you all know, because participants had questions about transportation. They had questions about assessments, a variety of topics. And so I want to say thank you to all of the staff who participated and gave up some evenings to come out and spend time with us and spend time with the community, really leading discussions and answering people's questions. So the structure of the forums, which, again, all of you were at a forum, so you know this, but for members of the public who were not able to attend a forum, we structured them a little bit differently than we have in the past, and we did this so that people could actually have a meaningful discussion, as I mentioned before. And so the beginning part of the forum was 30-minute presentation from, you know, each of you who attended the forums, as well as Mark Mathers, who gave some background on the budget situation. And then we broke into small groups, and this is where a lot of the staff members really helped out and participated. We had staff members from a variety of departments at each of the small group discussions. Those group discussions ranged from about five participants at a table to, I think, at the most, we had probably between 10 and 15 at a table. And they were able to really get into what they thought was important in their schools, what they wanted to keep, what they, you know, could consider maybe cutting. And then we came back and did the report back with a question and answer. And I think the report back was really, was really unique, because people came up to the front of the room, and they reported back what they discussed at their groups. And I could see that the participants in the discussions were really excited to be able to present their ideas to the trustees. And I think it was, it was neat that it shifted the, the power a little bit, because you all were kind of in the audience at that point, and it was the community members who were sharing their thoughts. And so it was really positive, I think, to see what some people said. So the discussion questions that we focused on, I've listed above, and we tried to keep these positive, the idea being, you know, we wanted to keep conversations positive. So we didn't want to just say to people, "Okay, tell us what you think we should cut." So instead, we tried to focus on personal stories of participants, you know, you're a student here, you're a parent of a student here, what has really worked at this school, what has worked in your community. Talk about personal stories of the programs that matter to you, and talk about things that you would keep and what's really important. So we did give them a copy of the community survey that was out to the public over winter, and I think had more than 2,000 responses. And so they used that survey kind of as some guidelines to talk about, you know, do we agree with what some of the, the other community members said in the survey? And so that also kind of kept it, you know, kind of, kind of on point and positive. So we'll talk a little bit about some of the common themes that we saw. One thing that I heard at every single forum was quotes like, "Educate the whole child, provide a well-rounded education, and kids need outlets." Those were really common quotes. I think it was very clear at each forum that the community was very proud of Washoe County School District because of the well-rounded education that we do provide. There was a lot of emphasis put on the fact that, you know, we don't want to make cuts for music and art, we don't want to make cuts from athletics, we want to keep EL and gifted and talented and special education. And these types of things were very important to people who are participating across the board. Some of the other things that, that people mentioned is being very important was maintenance and custodial. I think at every forum, we heard that. Don't cut maintenance and custodial. We want our buildings to be kept up. You know, we appreciate the work that maintenance and custodial is doing. There was pretty much agreement also about not cutting administrators at the school level, making sure that teachers were not cut, wanting to really keep the level of education the same at the schools. And then there was some discussion about class sizes. People were pretty much in agreement that the current class sizes were good. If anything, I think some people wanted class sizes to go back to being smaller. I don't think there was anyone there who wanted to increase the class sizes again. And transportation for high school students, which was one of the topics that was on the survey as a suggestion, as a way to save money, and I think that was pretty much, most people were in agreement that they wanted to keep the transportation for high school students. And even though we didn't ask them what to cut, they still talked about it a little bit. I mean, it's kind of hard not to. And I think one thing that was really interesting is that, I think, every group, when they reported back, they said, "Oh, gosh, this is so hard to do." And they really were in your shoes for the evening and got to see that, you know, this is not easy decisions to make about balancing our budget. And that, of course, we want to keep absolutely everything, and we want to add things, and, you know, money doesn't grow on trees, so we can't do that. But I think they really got to see that perspective of, okay, there are tough decisions to be made, so what do we, how do we think about this? And so they pretty much agreed with some of the top items that were on the community survey, that the community had agreed on. One of those was reducing academic assessments. I think everyone across the board liked that idea. I think there was some also discussion with teachers on special assignments, that that could be a potential place to cut. And then central administration, central administration staff also a place to cut. Although I will say that I think once we provided, well, really, Mr. Mathers provided the information in the upfront presentation about what particular staff members do and, you know, what, how much money things like reducing academic assessments would actually save, I think people had a little bit of a different perspective. I think less people, once they realized, so academic assessments, for example, once they realized that that wasn't going to save a large amount of money, they were kind of like, "Okay, yeah, maybe, you know, it's not, you know, it's not going to be at the top, because it's not going to save that much money." And again, with central administration, I think once people kind of understood how the district is structured and what the, what staff do and all the different departments that there are, I think they also kind of understood that, you know, it wasn't necessarily as easy of a decision as they had maybe thought in the survey. So that was kind of some ideas about what to cut. Now, people did not agree on everything, so they did have some disagreements. And it was interesting, because I think a lot of these were really dependent on the geographic area of the school. So there was discussion about the parent university and parent involvement facilitators at each of the forums. And at, I think it was the Collin Ranch forum, for example, I think a few parents brought up, "Oh, we don't really need parent university, we don't need PIFs." But when you looked at schools like Sun Valley, for example, we had people in groups saying, "No, we have to keep these, these are really important." So I think that was kind of clearly, you know, geographic and, and I think income-based, people's views on whether or not parent involvement facilitators and parent university were important. The other topic that had some disagreement was transportation, involving transportation to athletics games and transportation to field trips. Some schools said, "We don't need this, all the parents go to the games anyway, so why do we need transportation?" Other schools, especially, I think, Incline was one where this was apparent, that transportation to athletics and transportation to field trips is very important, because their games are often very far away, and parents are not always able to make it to all the games, so that they were pretty strongly advocating that transportation for those things were I think the walk zones, that was also pretty geographical, depending on where students resided and which school we were at. Again, at Incline, it was pretty, they were pretty adamant that they did not want to make walk zones any longer there. At some other schools, they were, they agreed that walk zones could be increased a little bit, but wanted to, of course, make sure that safety was taken into account first. And then career and technical education was another interesting. I didn't hear this a lot, but I did hear two very different, very different viewpoints. And I think at one school, someone said, "We don't need career and technical education, it's not the school district's job to do that." But then at most of the other schools, there was more agreement that career and technical education was an important thing to keep and an important thing for our students. So, you know, it's, it was difficult to kind of summarize how, how these forums turned out and what the views were of the people who attended these forums, because, again, there were some of these, these clear disagreements, and people are not going to agree on everything, and it really is dependent on the school. So the last slide I have here is just some other interesting ideas that came up that I wanted to share. Some of these are going to be more feasible than others, some will save more money than others, but it's just some interesting things that we heard. We heard some ideas about rerouting transportation or potentially contracting out or partnering with RTC for transportation, providing students discounted bus passes or something on RTC instead of using school buses. We heard quite a bit, I think, about teacher professional development, making it more efficient. The word streamlined was brought up a lot. So maybe not necessarily cutting teacher professional development completely, but figuring out a way to make it more effective, whether that's community and university partnerships that are maybe providing professional development at lower cost, or more online training. We also heard an idea about moving to digital textbooks and whether or not that would save money, and a suggestion that this might reduce the need for building lockers, and that would save money. There were a couple people who brought up the change, changing the school week to a four-day school week as an idea to save, to save funds. The library idea I thought was kind of interesting. At least one person brought up the idea of not necessarily getting rid of libraries, but creating some kind of a roving library or a mobile library that's shared between schools. There was some ideas about increasing technology as a way to save funding, so maybe if you can't have a gifted and talented teacher at a particular school, can you, can you Skype them in from another school, or can you have kind of, you know, district-wide online classes that are focused on some of those special groups at schools that maybe aren't as large as some of the, as a general education population? There was a thought about energy savings, and if we start school later in the year, will that save money, because we won't be running the air conditioning as much? Of course, there was a lot of calls for lobbying the state for more funding. I think at every forum, someone said, you know, "Hey, why don't we just ask for more money?" Which, sure, we've never done before, right? I mean, there was some discussion about, you know, police and whether or not we want to, you know, contract out police, do we want to have a partnership with Reno Police instead of school police? And there was an idea in Incline about selling former Incline school land as a way to raise a little bit of money. So that's the last slide that we have. And again, some of these ideas are, you know, feasible, some are not, but I wanted to just share them with you, that some, some kind of unique ways that people were thinking. I think people got really creative in thinking about this. So that's all I have. I don't know, Mark, if you want to add anything, or is there any questions or comments?
Thank you, Samantha. Questions from the board? Trustee Taylor? Dr. Taylor?
Thanks, Madam President. It's not, it isn't a question, it's a statement. Honestly, I wasn't quite sure how these were going to go, because we had never done them before.
Yeah.
But really, just, I want to commend, you know, the, I mean, we've had, you know, budget town halls and so on before, and we haven't gotten the participation that we'd like, but I was really impressed with the, with the participation and, and the involvement, and really the engagement of the parents that showed up and, and so on. So just thank, thanks to you and the team that put them together and the staff that showed up, and my colleagues for all, for us being there and so on. I just thought it was a really good way to really hear from the community, and so I really thank you for, for giving us that opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. Other, other comments? Questions? Yeah. Trustee Dr. Feenster.
Yes, I'd like to thank trustee Frankel for the great job that she did at Sun Valley, because it's a different population, and we heard a lot more different issues. Like, the reason why they don't want transportation cut is because of lighting, poor lighting, and, you know, that's understandable. So it made us think, as trustees and leaders at the tables, made us think that every area is different, and you really have to keep that as a focus when you're looking at budget cutting. And thanks to your leadership and direction, I think you did a fantastic job, and we had a great evening, and it was, the attendance was probably attended by music teachers, which I guess they said this is the last time to get there and talk about music, and they showed up and they spoke, and that, that was, that was great. I, the one comment that I would like to probably focus on is maybe next time, if we not- I, the one comment that I would like to probably focus on is maybe next time if we not share some of the issues from previous sessions, because what it does is it kind of immediately stifles the creativity that the parents might have, if they, you know, those who attend, because, again, again, it's a different area. But I have to say that because we were at our table, at least our group, had the opportunity to just think about what are the needs for this area. And I think maybe that statement is made, or just the information from other meetings isn't shared. It might help us get more solutions, more creativity, more stuff that's important to the particular area that we're in. And I would truly love to see more meetings at schools, let's say, for instance, in clusters. And I know we tried to do that, but I, I believe we need to have, no, I know that we need to have more parents. And I would love to see us come up with ideas to get more parents there, because it's important to hear from the parents, and I know it could be done. You know, you could do raffle tickets, you could do, and that's up to the schools. And I think if we could just ask, you know, ask the parent involvement person at each particular school to do just a little fundraiser, make it a fundraiser on the side, you can get more parents there. So, because I would really want to hear from the parents. But well-structured, great job to Veronica, thank you so much, and it was great being there with, yeah, all the leaders, thank you so much.
Thank you. Trustee Mayor, Clerk Mayor.
Yes, it, it was great, the way it was organized, and it was an eye-opening thing to see, cut others, but don't cut my sacred cow. You know, the music teachers, rightfully so, don't want music cut. PE athletic coaches, cut music, don't cut athletics. Everybody has a sacred cow, and they don't want that cow to be touched. And it was very apparent out at Sun Valley and some of the groups that I was in, and I was in all four, that that was prevalent in the discussion. And I think that's one of the things we're facing with budget cuts. Some people want special teachers on assignment, some don't want parent facilitators. So no matter what you cut, one of them's, one of those sacred cows has got to get cut or reduced. And the other sacred cows are going to move to high heavens when theirs are cut and some of the others aren't. So, and that was prevalent with all the parents. I stayed and talked to several couples that were there and stuff, and it was apparent right there. And I, I appreciate the way it was conducted, and it got a chance to speak to everyone and the all different opinions and the whys and whynots and so forth, and that was terrific. That was terrific. So people that organize it, it's a good thing to continue in the past, and I liked, you had it in each area, maybe next year you can increase it or whatever. Thank you again.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Well, we've, we've said our thank yous to the staff, and we do very much appreciate it. I know a lot of people gave a lot of extra time to participate. And I also, I know on behalf of the board, would like to thank all the, the folks who came out, all of the parents and community members who attended. I know the Collin Ranch evening with Vice President Raymond, it was snowing. It was a terrible night, and we had 50 people there. It was just really impressive that people made the effort, and I, I think it's really going to grow in future years, and, and appreciate Dr. Feenster's suggestions as well. Great job, and thank you, and we'll, I know we'll look forward to more of the same. Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Sam. All right, we will move on then to 2.02. Presentation by staff and discussion by the board regarding the fiscal year 2019 budget, including a presentation of the current budget process, descriptions of funding sources and uses, update regarding the structural budget deficit, deficit reduction solutions, budget timeline, and consideration of possible direction to the superintendent and staff. And this is, of course, one of the most important things that the board does. We very much appreciate all of the very thoughtful and comprehensive work that's been done, not only by our financial staff, but also by all of the departments and, and our chief officers. So, Mr. Mathers, our Chief Financial Officer, and Mike Schroeder, our Budget Director, you have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, Board of Trustees. Happy to launch into this very intense, in-depth discussion of the fiscal year 19 budget. In terms of the format that we'd like to use this morning, first, we'll kind of give some background and context to the district's historical deficits and financial situation. And then we'll talk about the budget process itself, how we met with the chiefs and departments, and came up with the recommendations that are listed, and then we will go kind of give you an overview then of those recommendations. We won't get into specifics, but we'll give you, you know, an overview of what areas are proposed to be reduced, and the implications of that, and where the district's fund balance will end up and, and where the deficit will end up. And then our last kind of area that we'd like to cover would be a discussion of specific proposals to reduce budgets. And kind of the format of this is we will go through Attachment D, which is the very thick, 45-page document, area by area is the, is the kind of format we'd like to use. So we'll have somebody from Finance, either me or Mike at the table, and then we'll bring up the chiefs to talk about each of their areas and the specific recommendations for reductions, which our Financial Review Committee came up with. Also, if, if you'd like, talk about those ideas that are, were considered but not recommended, since those are part of the packet as well. So that'll be a large part of this process, is to go through those recommendations, area by area, so that you can see them and there can be discussion. So with that, I'd like to get into, again, just a little bit of context and background, and many of you have seen some of these slides already, but I think it's important to hit on the slides again for the benefit of the public and media and, and parents and so forth. The first chart, a little hard to read, a little hard to get through probably, but this is taken from the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, and, and they talk about stages of financial recovery, and I think that's where, you know, let's be honest, that's where the district is, is in. We're in our financial recovery mode. So as you can see from kind of that chart there, you know, we, the district has started to dip into the, into the red over the last several years. And so the first step, you know, that we kind of go through in that situation, or and GFOA recommends going through, is a diagnosis. What is causing that decline in, in our fund balance and, and that shortfall? And so as we think about Washoe County School District, and I think a lot of this applies to every school district in Nevada, there are some, you know, various aspects here that make constructing a budget and keeping a balanced budget a difficult proposition. And so, you know, first bullet point there in the top left is, as we'll go through, you know, the revenue we get from the state, which amounts to 80% of our general fund, frankly doesn't keep pace with inflation. If our enrollment is flat, we get roughly a half a percent of an increase in revenue, which, you know, compares very unfavorably to other local governments in the county who get their share of sales tax, and so sales tax grows 10%, they get that 10%, we don't. We get a guarantee from the state, but that guarantee doesn't go up very much every year. So a consequence of that is we almost start every budget year behind the curve. And even if we get into a balanced budget situation, it's hard to maintain that balanced budget when the cost of living adjustment for employees might be 1%, and people move through the salary range at 1%, and yet we're only funded at half a percent. So again, if our enrollment is relatively steady, that creates a problem. If our enrollment is spiking, that kind of masks the problem. But that would be kind of one observation in terms of diagnosis. Along with that, we're aware, you know, there are various unfunded mandates, both federal and state mandates, and we could probably talk about them all day. But that's certainly, you know, a serious issue for, that the district has to deal with and has to come up with general fund money to cover that unfunded portion of the mandate. Most of you know we have a flawed tax structure here in Nevada. It's a very complicated process to calculate and collect property taxes, and that also has created issues for all local governments, including school districts. And then lastly, looking at ourselves in the mirror, I think there's some financial issues that, you know, we passed boards, passed superintends, probably could exercise a little bit greater financial discipline. We've started to address those issues with new budget policies and so forth. So I think, you know, honestly, there's, given the other issues we face and kind of this diagnosis, we've got to be very careful with the money we have and good stewards of that money. And so where I see, you know, the district currently is we've, I think, hit our nadir of fund balance, and we're coming up, but we're not yet to a balanced budget. And so some of the historical approaches the district has used is kind of listed in that fiscal first aid box. Some of the classic kind of temporary or interim solutions we've made is deferring, at least until WC1, major capital purchases, shifting costs to grants as much as we can, which is just a prudent thing to do anytime, but certainly there's an increased focus on that. Certainly, deferral of certain liabilities is something that is kind of a classic financial maneuver to give yourself a little bit of breathing room, and the district has done that. We have reduced our contributions for other post-employment benefits, OPEB, for instance. We deferred textbooks as long as we could, we've deferred purchase of fleet. And so those are things you do immediately to get yourself kind of in a stable situation, but it's, keep in mind, those are things that'll have to be addressed in the future. And then we, you know, look to obviously refinance our liabilities as much as we can. Where I see us going, and, and just, you know, to kind of share staff's thoughts, we're in the treatment or reform phase. And so I think we made a lot of progress in getting out of the hole we've been, but we're just now embarking on kind of transformational, kind of different approaches. That, again, includes new budget policies that we just approved a couple of weeks ago. We are starting our priority-based budgeting process that started in January. We think that'll really transform how we look at the budget. Part of that is inventorying everything we do, and starting to critically look at all of those programs we do on a program level, not a department level. You'll see here in the materials in Attachment D, and also in this presentation, we've started benchmark, benchmarking our agency, which simply means comparing our costs on a kind of a per-unit basis to other school districts, to ask ourselves, are, are we doing things cheaply compared to our peers, or maybe at a greater cost than our peers? And that doesn't give us an answer as to whether we're good or bad, it just starts the conversation about, well, how can they do it more efficiently than we, we do? What can we do differently? And then, you know, other, other kind of areas in terms of treatment or reform include fundamental or strategic reviews, and, and looking at maybe operations that other people, other agencies can do, which for school districts is kind of few and far between, probably compared to cities and counties. But again, that kind of reform mission that we've started, this board has started, the superintendent has started, needs to carry through, but it is a multi-year effort, and so we don't really have a timeline on this chart, but it takes several years, right, to transform an agency and how they financially balance the books and look at their operations. And so when we talk about it, I know this board understands and that, and gave us direction to come back with a balanced budget in three years, and I thought that was very prudent and wise, because it does take time to change how you look at and, and review operations. And so that's where we're at, and I just wanted to kind of convey, you know, we're at probably the beginning stages of that. So it's possible we, we could get to a balanced budget, but on the other hand, we're looking at process improvements in a number of areas, we're looking at priority-based budgeting that should give us new insights. And so rightfully so, even if we got to a balanced budget in this fiscal year, I think there's a lot more work we still need to do to improve our financial situation. Again, with the end goal being, if we can mine programs and, and funding of, of certain costs that maybe aren't as efficient and reinvest them in other programs, wouldn't that be great? And that's where we want to go. I think this board is all aware of our historical district deficits, and I don't want to belabor this point, but this is just a chart to, again, show you kind of where the district has been over time. Again, part of this really, you know, is half a ledger, the revenue ledger. It is, with, with fairly steady enrollment over the last several years, it's been difficult to maintain a balanced budget, certainly, or to not lose ground, again, based, you know, on the fact that, you know, in the next chart, you can, which we went over at the community forums, revenues have been flat. Yes, ma'am?
Mark, just back on the previous slide, if you could just share with folks, we had a widely-reported $40 million deficit going in, and, for example, 2017 shows 9.99 million. Can you just explain that for folks?
Sure. So when we kind of come first to the board and talk about a deficit, that's really, you know, our shortfall in our base budget. So how we build the budget is take a look at all of our commitments and staffing levels in the prior year, and then carry them forward to the next year. And so we report to the Board of Trustees with that initial number to say, "We're short this much." And then, as you know, we go through a process where we identify solutions to that. And so for fiscal year 17, I believe the budgeted shortfall was a little, along lines of 20 million. We ended up, you know, by tightening our belts with a, an actual deficit of just under 10 million in fiscal year 17. But going to the fiscal year 18 process, we had 40 and a half million dollar initial deficit. You know, and again, that's not the final budget deficit that's submitted to the state, that's the initial deficit based on that base budget. And we, you know, prior staff, prior CFO, and, and Mike and staff identified a number of solutions to get there. In the case of fiscal year 18, roughly half of that were, half of the solutions to cover the 40 and a half million, roughly 21 million, were one-time solutions, and half were really recurring or reductions that would carry through in future years. So staff halved, in essence, that deficit, and that's why kind of, as you see going through the budget document, we had estimated a deficit of 22 to 28. Turns out it's 19. It's kind of in line with the fact that we, you know, used half of the, or covered half of the deficit with one-time solutions and half with permanent solutions. So we end up with a balanced budget per the state's definition, which means total sources, which include fund balance along with revenues, cover total expenditures. Where we want to get to is a structurally balanced budget, where we don't use fund balance or reserves to, to equal expenses, where ongoing revenues equals ongoing expenses.
So just to, to finish the thought on there, the 2017, slightly less than 10 million, is after reductions, and the 2018 estimated 22.73 is before we make all of the reductions. So our deficits, the structural deficits are getting smaller, and the staff has done a good job of addressing those. I just wanted to point out that the deficit isn't significantly greater than it was last year. Where we're starting is greater than where we ended up in the budget process last year. Great, thank you.
Yep, that's absolutely correct. So the next slide is a slide we included in the community forums, and again, for the benefit of the public or anyone kind of listening, the middle line, the red line, shows the per pupil guaranteed amount that the state guarantees to the school district per child. And so that has increased from $5,446 in 2009 to $5,677 in 2018. And as that note on the bottom shows, so for that nine-year period, that per pupil amount went up 4% in total. Not 4% a year, 4% in total. Inflation over that time went up 11%. So we lost 7% purchasing power over that nine years. Now, again, if you have dramatic enrollment growth, that masks what's going on. But since we've had relatively steady enrollment growth over those last three or four years, you know, our total revenues from the state kind of track along these lines. We're receiving roughly half a percent of increase in the money from the state in the general fund, not counting grant funds and other resources that have increased, but in the general fund, roughly half a percent a year. And again, as we've talked about, that makes it difficult to balance a budget when your costs are going up 1, 1 and 1/2% a year, and you're only getting half a percent. We quantified the shortfall this creates in the top box. On an inflation-adjusted basis, we actually received $345 less per pupil compared to fiscal year '09. And if you multiply that $345 times 64,000 students, that's a, after, you know, kind of considering inflation, on an inflation-adjusted basis, that's a shortfall of $22 million. inflation, an inflation-adjusted basis, that's a shortfall of $22 million. And so this is kind of a story that doesn't get told a lot. Again, I don't want to sound like I'm whining, but this is a, in terms of diagnosing what the district's financial issues are, this is front and center to, to what our issues are and why is it always going to be a challenge to balance our budget? You know, the other main revenue source we have are property taxes. And again, the story's not a good one here. In 2009 and 2010, we received kind of, it was our peak year in terms of property taxes. Both of those years, we received roughly $110 million in property taxes, and we get to keep two-thirds of that. But as you can see from the chart, both on a inflation-adjusted basis, which is the bottom line, but even on a nominal dollar basis, we're not back to our peak. But certainly on an inflation-adjusted basis, we receive 14% less property taxes, or roughly $14 million less than we did during that peak. So we're not getting any relief from that local revenue source compared to, you know, the state revenues we receive.
You know, I hear a lot about the cap, the property cap. So when the inflation went down, their property tax went down at a high rate. Now that it's recovering, it doesn't go up
That's right.
as high percentage-wise as it went down. So it's going to take us longer, just by time, to get to back where we were. Because we, there's a cap going up, but no cap going down. And that, I think that's one of the biggest things that people that present to the legislature, like the State School Board and these people, the cap should be each way equal instead of higher coming down than going up. And I think it's a major, major problem that has to be looked at. Thank you. I'm going whine for you. Somebody will bring the cheese later.
Thank you. No, you're absolutely right. I think last year, the total amount of abatement, which just means the amount of property taxes that would have been paid with no cap versus, and that's based on the assessed value, not market value, but assessed value, and the actual amount paid countywide was $75 million. So, you know, we have a share of that, and that would have gone a long way to help our budget deficit as well. The next slide is kind of an oddball slide maybe, but one of the things we wanted to bring when talking to departments about their budgets was to acknowledge those departments that had given up positions or had been reduced before versus maybe those who hadn't. And so what we went back to was three years ago, fiscal year 16, and looked at, you know, how were departments staffed and budgeted for back then? Not so coincidentally, fiscal year 16's expenses were under what we estimate our fiscal year 19 revenues to be. So if we got back to the fiscal 16 expenditure level, we would have a balanced budget. What I get out of this chart, not so much kind of the little ins and outs, and a lot of times what you see in terms of ins and outs are functions that were transferred from one area to another, like from the Board of Trustees to the superintendent's office. That would be why you see kind of a near net zero change between those two offices. But what I get out of this, after we looked at it, was it's not as if this district has loaded up on central services or central administration. Where have we increased? It's been at the school level, 18.3 million. That includes, you know, the cost of living adjustments for teachers and then moving through their salary range, health insurance for teachers. Also includes a full day, the full day kindergarten, kindergartner program that was funded out of special revenue funds and now is general funded. But we've increased funding for schools, 18 million. And then the next largest area is student support. And that really represents the transfer from the general fund to our special education fund. So really $12 million went, or close to that, have gone to fund increases to special education. So again, it's kind of a different chart, but I wanted to share it with you so you could see where has this school district's budget increased over the last three years. So that kind of concludes kind of the context or background I wanted to give you as we kind of marched through the discussion of the fiscal year 19 budget, just so you realize kind of where we've been and where we're going. Again, you know, we kind of believe this is a multi-year process and review. No matter what the board decides, we still have a lot of work to do. But now we can talk about kind of how we constructed our recommendations for the fiscal year 19 budget.
Thanks, Mark. For the record, Mike Schroeder, Budget Director. Good morning, President Holland, Superintendent Davis, and members of the board. We just kind of wanted to go through where we've been. I mean, in reality, last year, we had a budget workshop in March, and we were already talking about the fiscal year 19 budget deficit of 22 to 28 million. And obviously, the board recognized that. You wanted to do something about it. You wanted to start this process a lot earlier this year than we had done in the past. That started back in August when we looked at the strategic plan. As Mark pointed out, you wisely put into the strategic plan to say, we really need a structurally balanced budget and we want to do best practices in school budgeting. We talked about those in August, and those were made as part of the strategic plan. September, we told you we'd bring back, start talking about budget policies and budget principles, started a conversation about that. Ultimately, we did bring those forward. And we also talked about where we currently spend our money and just to give you an idea of how we allocate resources. October, November, more budget updates. At this whole time, we were also revising revenue and expenditure projections. The longer we go, the more solid that information is. And at that point in time, we have a whole changeover of employees that really impacts the budget. We want to wait till those new employees settle in and see where that gets us in the current year. December, we launched a budget survey after talking to the board about it. Still working on revising our projections for revenues and expenditures. Talked about new budget methodologies, you know, rebasing our budget, using contra accounts, critically reexamining past expenditures, things like that. We also talked about priority-based budgeting, and at this point in time, we had distributed all the budget packets to the departments and schools and started working with them on looking at ways to create efficiencies or find deficiencies or find ways to reduce our budget. January and February, once again, we got the results of the budget survey. We had five budget forums to share those results and get further input from public regarding what they felt were priorities on the operational side and the instructional side. And once again, revising projections and compiling all this information that's here before you. So it's kind of, all this work is kind of culminated right there, and these are the results of that. Doesn't mean the process is done. There's still things to do regarding that, but it's where we're at right now based on the best information we have. So as you know, we started this conversation a while back saying 22 to 28 million. And after working through all the process, what happened in fiscal year 18 is trustee Simon Holland referred to. We were looking at a $40 million deficit. We, the board and staff and our employees made some really hard decisions to try to eat into that deficit. And when you do that, obviously, you want to make reductions that are recurring. Because if you make one-time reductions, you're just saving yourself for one year, but that cost will move forward to the next year. So by the time we got done with everything, we had reduced the budget by 23.5 million. And we got it down to really 16.6 million. The previous slide showed about 22 million. At the end of the fiscal year 18 budget, we had added in about 6.1 million net for the property tax lawsuit. That's a one-time event that doesn't occur again. So the structural deficit moving forward from last year is 16.6 million. Now, we had new information regarding revenues. There's a ton of things that have changed here, but in general, we're looking at increasing ad valorem costs by 4%, and that's over the prior year pro forma amount. For fiscal year 18, we actually were a little bit more than that pro forma amount. Sales tax, we estimate to be 5% increase, but all that gets offset to the DSA in the per pupil amount they give us there. So it doesn't really add anything to our overall budget. Government services tax is about 12.6%. Fiscal year 18, we're kind of flat on that. We've seen a lot of growth in that area, so it's kind of like a two-year catch-up. That's why that one's a little bit higher. Per pupil funding goes up $60 per pupil, and that adds money to the overall revenue stream. But we're using flat enrollment. The last couple of years, we've added some growth in enrollment. We hadn't seen that come through, and what happens, it, it ends up causing part of a deficit because you're putting money in the budget that you don't really see, it doesn't really materialize. So we're being really conservative on that and saying, we're going with flat enrollment. So when you add all that up, it's about $2.1 million more. And that seems pretty minuscule compared to our ongoing costs, and that's kind of what happens down below. When you look at what our salary increments for all our employees, experience increment on salary tables for items we've negotiated for, to recognize their service to our district and plus health insurance costs, those are about 9.5 million. And the good thing, this is why we waited to say, okay, when we did our early estimate, we've got old employees, we're moving them forward. What happens is we get a huge changeover of employees. Typically, we'll change over 300 to 400 teachers, plus a number of other employees. A lot of people retire, things like that, or leave the district. But we're a big operation. We have a lot of people, and when you put that whole impact together, it's a significant change. And that amounts to about 4.9 million really of savings from one year to the next. So if you put those two together, the salary and this, what I call the basis adjustment, really that big changeover of employees, plus any vacancy savings that occurred during the course of the year, I mean, that's a, like, $4.6 million. And those are kind of like our ongoing costs. And up here, we're saying our new recurring ongoing revenues are only about 2.1 million, but our recurring ongoing costs are like 4.6. So just in this base funding and local funding, we have a structural deficit right there. And this is what's been happening year after year, and that's one of the reasons we're really pushing for this next legislative period to say, we need to address the base. We're not even covering our ongoing costs. There are other operating increases of about 1.8 million. These were talked about way back when, when we talked about the fiscal year 19 deficit. A lot of that, about 1.1 million, was for textbooks. We have a textbook adoption cycle. That's, there's been a significant increase in textbooks. So to adopt the next cycle is going to be about 1.1 million more than we have in the current budget. Property and liability insurance has gone up about $300,000, $400,000 over the last two years. So there's $710,000 in there for that. We have a lease agreement. We had a lot of Title I people in a building, but according to the newest rules, I mean, we can't really, there's some people in there that are kind of general funded and things. So we have to shift some of those costs to the general fund. That's about $55,000. We rent Lawler Event Center to do our graduations. There's been a pretty big cost increase in there. There's about $38,000 in the budget to cover that. These new schools, we have new maintenance fees that are going to be associated with those schools. So there's about $35,000 in there for that. Obviously, you're going to be talking about a lunched debt here at the upcoming board meeting, but that's grown significantly. And right now, until it's addressed, we've put $100,000 in the budget in addition to the $30,000 we already had there to cover that. We've talked about priority-based budgeting. There's an item brought to the board that costs $50,000 in the current year. We were taking that out of the contingency account. Next year, it's about $25,000 more. So that's kind of what's making up the 1.8 million. But on the good side, and this is part of waiting to see what the information is, we didn't even know what our special education funding is was until, I don't know, two, three months into our current fiscal year. So we did see an increase over there, over what we had in the fiscal year 18 budget. Plus, there's additional money being added to the fiscal year 19 budget overall. So we anticipate, based on where we're at, that'd be about 3.2 million, but there's also some additional costs there, probably about 1.5 million. So that's where that 1.8 million comes from there. But when you add it all up, basically, what we're saying is if you took our current operations and you continued them into next year without really changing anything and paid for mandated increased costs related to those current operations, we'd be about 19.1 million in the hole. Our revenues are less than those expenditures, and that's where our structural deficit is. But overall, we were starting with 22 to 28. So this is a net improvement from that early start, and it's a good place to start. And this is before we're talking about doing any of these other budget rebacings or contra accounts or any of these budget methodologies we've been talking about.
Mike, before you go on, any questions from the board? I did want to ask, we've been focusing on, in the materials that you've provided us, what the impacts of future reductions would be, and I wondered if there was a process to assess what the impacts of the previous reductions have been. I know it's soon to tell how those have impacted us, but I think it would be interesting for the board members and the public to know, you know, what, what were the consequences of some of those decisions we had to make last year?
That's a good question. A lot of that obviously was with class size increases by two students in grades four through 12, so I don't have that information at my fingertips, but I'm sure we can gather it.
Yeah, as you, as you go through the next few weeks, I think it would be great to, you know, have we seen declines in achievement or have we seen, you know, lack of participation or any of those kinds of things? Because I think that helps us to, to sort of benchmark some of those decisions going forward.
Yes, good suggestion. So now we're at a point where, okay, we know we have a deficit, we knew we had a deficit, and once again, how can you address it? We have to file a balanced budget. That's got to be due by June 8th. Really, our last board meeting prior to that is when we have a hearing on the tentative budget, which is in May. So it will probably be at that point in time where we approve a final budget. But like we said, a lot of things we used in the past, we no longer have available. Our fund balances are depleting, can't really use savings. We don't have class size reduction waivers anymore. We're not deferring textbook purchases. We have to continue our textbook adoption process. So it comes down to really hard decisions, and we spend close to 90% of our budget on people. So most of the decisions evolve around people, and those are not easy decisions to make, and it affects what we can do at this district, and it affects individuals too. So these are not easy decisions to make. So what we want to kind of do, we also have a financial review committee that does a lot of the background work, building up to the budget before we bring it to leadership team. We look at current vacant positions and see if, you know, is there, is that really needed? Is that something we can put into a possible budget reduction, things like that? So there's a lot of stuff we're currently doing behind the scenes as a group. And like I said, this isn't the end of the process. We're going to continue it, and if things come up during the interim that are kind of, well, it's pretty obviously, we could use that to reduce the budget, doesn't cause a lot of harm, or it's very minor in impact, then we would be bringing those forward to So as we met with the board and provided you update, we talked about a lot of budget new methodologies, and as we said, we really did a critical reexamination of past expenditures. Every time we get to the end of the year, we have a saving. So like back on Mark's slide, where we said we were like $10 million in the hole for fiscal year 17. The budget amount was more than that. We just finished better than budget. So it's, okay, is there a way to say, why do we continue to do that? So that was the critical reexamination. And then it's really based on a three-year period, and there's a lot of operating budgets mostly that we continue to provide for in the budget, but it doesn't get spent. So when we're talking about this rebasing, that's, that's the main thing we're talking about there. And we had our ideas, we shared those with departments, and we And we met and compromised on the amounts. And that's kind of what's presented as part of this package.
Mike, can I jump in? So just to kind of hit that up, this is a big new approach in the budget. And we call it rebasing. It's really resetting the base budget to reflect where historically the district has spent their money. And so as Mike has said, we met with all the departments and we urged them to look at their budgets, scour their budgets, and identify areas where they hadn't spent their budget. Of course, finance had that, which they knew, so that was good. But I'm happy to report that departments did really volunteer the great bulk of the base budget adjustments that you see on Attachment B. And so again, the idea here is that we looked over time, back three fiscal years, and where there were situations where consistently a department had had savings and a line item in the budget, we basically swept that and said, okay, you've managed to survive based on the historical expenditure level you've been at, and that's where we're going to re-budget you at. It is a one-time maneuver. And what that means is instead of seeing massive savings at the end of the fiscal year, you won't, the budget's now tighter to historical costs. But it does, you know, budget is better aligned now to actual expenses and how we actually spend. We don't intend to go over those Attachment B, those items where we rebased the budget with a few exceptions, which we'll talk about in the area of student services. There were a couple line items where they were mischaracterized as base budget reductions when in fact they're true cuts to budgets. And so Dr. Green will go through those, just a few, though. So the great bulk of the 5.6 million in base budget reductions, we all agreed on. You know, there was not a lot of disagreement between finance and the departments about what that historical trend was and whether or not those base budgets could be swept. So again, we don't intend to kind of really cover that in depth at all here today. I suppose if you had a particular question, we could talk about it. But again, these are based all on a review of where departments historically spent and what their historical savings were. So I just wanted to kind of highlight that since it's been talked about, but I don't know if we really defined it very well.
Thank you, Mark. We also talked about use of contras for salary savings. Essentially, we know by the time we get to the end of the year, where the actual salaries will be less than budgeted. So we're trying to say, well, we can budget for what we believe they're going to be, but we know there'll be turnover and vacancies, things like that. So by the time we get to the end of the year, we'll recognize that savings in the budget. And so we've used $4 million for these contra accounts. Back on the other slide I showed you where we got to our structural deficit, when I talked about our basis adjustment for salary and benefits. It's kind of that changeover of employees, the turnover that takes place during the course of the year, things like that. So that's where we're getting this $4 million from.
And Mike, what, so what is that $4 million as a percentage of compensation budget? And does that, that includes all of the sort of cascading impacts? Because if we save a dollar of salary, we also save a dollar of per contribution and other things.
Yeah, that would be salary and benefits combined. I think off the top of my head, we're like 200 and, well, probably close to 300 million when you combine the special ed portion of that. So it's it's a little over 1%, 1.2%, somewhere in there.
Okay, I think that's reasonable and safe and conservative. Great, thank you.
And anyway, so that's what we're talking about, some of these new budget methodologies and how that ultimately is going to impact where our structural deficit ends up.
Do you want to start with this one?
Chief Frankel.
Just back on the previous slide, I don't know if you're going to get into more detail on the academic return on investment process and the, I have a lot of questions about that process. I'll hold them if you're going to get into more explanation about the way that process was used and where it was applied and the decisions around that. I'm particularly interested on that first question in terms of whether it was applied to a variety of programs. I only see one analysis in the packet. But the other thing I wanted to discuss a little bit more was the choice of metrics to be used as return to evaluate outcomes in return. And just what the discussion was around that and the decision, at least the one in the one analysis I saw to land on graduation rates as the measure. So I wanted to hear a little bit more about that at some point. So whenever that seems appropriate in the flow of your presentation.
Okay. I'm trying to think about where that would be appropriate. So Mike, you want me to take this?
Yeah.
Okay. So the next few slides really talk about the process we use to develop recommendations. And so it may be appropriate at the end of this to talk about academic return on investment. What we did was try to create a, rather than just give an edict to departments to say, you know, we want to see your cuts and we collect them and so forth. We wanted to kind of create a dialogue with departments and we wanted to talk about process improvements. We wanted to use the benchmarking data we had collected, which, most of which you see in Attachment D. So we wanted to be very transparent. But in here, you're going to see areas where we looked at other agencies and quantified how they serviced a particular program or subgroup of students. And by asking those questions, start the dialogue with them about are there, can we do, can we accomplish the same thing differently and more efficiently? And again, it's just the start of a conversation. And in many areas, it led to a very fruitful discussion of changes to the service delivery model that we're looking at. And that, in a couple of major areas, continues. And we don't have anything actual definitive to report to you. But the conversation started, I'm really confident that's going to lead to further savings in fiscal year 20 and 21. So that was our intent. We started meeting in December with departments. We asked them, we asked departments to volunteer reductions. Since they're the subject matter experts in your area, where do you think you could reduce costs with the least amount of impact? And so we met with departments a number of times in some situations. Sometimes it was pretty straightforward. But, you know, again, that dialogue included a discussion of what would that impact would be. And certainly, in many, many, many areas, there's a service level impact. By reducing staff, there is going to be a reduction in the service level. So we asked for the commentary from departments. You've seen that in Attachment D. They tried to outline or very briefly what those impacts would be to cuts. But certainly, there are some areas where there are workarounds or process improvements where potentially we think we can maintain the service level at a reduced staffing level. We've talked about new service delivery models. And again, in most situations, that's something that takes more than a couple of months to talk about and incorporate. So for those situations, that's probably, again, in future years that we see kind of departments present something to you and talk about possible efficiencies that result from that. And in theory, you know, there could be a strategic divestment of a program. And this is more along lines of priority-based budgeting. If it turns out we're operating a program that's really kind of not aligned with our strategic goals, then, you know, one consideration really is stop doing it. We really don't have any of those examples in this current fiscal year's proposed budget to talk about that. But that is something that can happen, kind of a healthy pruning, if you will. If it turns out, you know, hey, this isn't a high priority, this is a very low priority. So anyhow, we had all those discussions. We certainly did look at benchmarking data where we could. In some areas, it was difficult to do. But we tried to, again, kind of use that information to inform the discussions. Sorry, I was, yes, okay. Next slide. So after compiling those reduction options from departments, and again, based on kind of an iterative dialogue with them to say, you know, in some areas maybe, hey, can you give us this instead of that or so forth? Those proposed reductions went to our financial review committee. And I think most of you know what that is. But it is a committee composed of myself, the chief of staff, the human resource, chief human resources officer, the deputy superintendent, and the chief operations officer. And so collectively, we reviewed each of those reduction options and scored them on a grade of one to four. And you can see there kind of how that tallies up. What you have in front of you in terms of recommendations on Attachment D, that again, we'll go, you know, specifically through later on today, would be proposals that scored either a one or a two from all members. And, you know, sometimes there might have been an initial score of three or four, and we went back and said, why'd you score it a three or four? And, you know, if that person changed it to a one or a two, then it fell back into that category. And when we looked at these reductions, you know, some of the considerations that went into it, again, were, you know, kind of in a pre-priority-based budgeting consideration, alignment to the strategic plan, the degree of the impact on direct instruction. So we wanted to stay as far away from direct instruction cuts as we could, which is why you don't see a class size increase or cuts to music or arts, for instance. Those we wanted to avoid if at all possible. But there are some areas where certainly there's some degree of impact on that. Certainly, there's a risk assessment kind of component to what we're looking at. We don't want to create unsafe conditions or noticeable impacts to programs. It's kind of a bang-for-the-buck measure. We didn't spend a lot of time, obviously, on like a $5,000 reduction. With a deficit, with a starting number for the deficit of $19 million, we need large cuts to get there. So we looked at that. We had a discussion of kind of the results of the program. And I, you know, maybe this is where we get into a discussion of academic return on investment. You know, this is, this is a challenge at the current time. I think one of the things we struggle with are, you know, probably what we will need to do in terms of treatment or reform or a more robust performance measurement system. So it's hard to get data right now on many programs in terms of very granular information about, you know, the cost per student of that program or, again, the results. We used what we could find and what we had. But this has been a challenge, coming here to kind of see, you know, there is an opportunity to develop performance measures, certainly, I think, in the future. And then the last consideration here was, are there alternative ways to accomplish the same goal? And so certainly in some situations, we had those kind of discussions with this, increased technology, again, process improvements or just workarounds. Is, are there different ways to get the job done with fewer staff? So I'm going to, I think, stop there. So that if anyone had any questions about the procedures used, the process used to kind of vet the ideas that were proposed for reductions, we can answer those.
Questions. Trustee Frankel.
I can ask the same one I asked before. And again, I was curious in terms of the application. I know that different approaches were applied to different programs in reading the document. And so I wanted to know more about the, and there is, I mean, I'm interested in the academic return on investment. It's a new thing that we're doing. It's got obviously some challenges. You and I've talked about that. And I, and so I guess I wanted to hear more about the discussion around perceived results or what was determined to be return. Because there's so many ways and so many measures that can be used. Well, first question is, was that academic return on investment applied to, how many different programs was that applied to? I mean, I see one, and I wondered if there were others that just weren't included here. And so that was one question, if there were other programs besides the EL program that had that application. And the second one was, again, the discussion around the variety of different measures that we could use. And in that particular analysis, the choice was graduation rates. And I have questions about that choice as a measure. So I just kind of wanted to hear more about that discussion because I find it, you know, challenging and interesting, and also it leads to some recommendations. And so I kind of want to understand the assumptions behind the process that was used that are leading to that recommendation because I have questions and concerns about that recommendation.
Okay.
Thanks.
I'll be really candid here. You know, we have approached the Government Finance Officers Association. It's really kind of talked about academic return on investment a number of times. And none of the materials they provide to school districts are the real examples of how to calculate that. And so there's this kind of instruction, you need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this. But very few concrete examples of how an agency's used this. What GFOA has emphasized is for new programs, that's the time really to start the measurement on an academic return on investment basis and compute that. They don't recommend doing it retroactively. They don't recommend even making comparisons to other agencies, although we did in this example. And really, I think what they don't really kind of emphasize, again, is a performance measurement system has to be in place. I mean, they mentioned that. But I think fundamentally, you need to identify the, explicitly, the expected outcomes of a program. And that will lead you then into how to measure those outcomes. And that's why in our policies that I think you'll be finally approving or proving in final form later today in the regular agenda, we talk about new programs. When there is a new program initiated, the board should expect to know what the expected outcomes are. And there should be a sunset review of that program along with data. And listening to some of the public comment, that would have been a good example. And where we could go is, okay, we have a teacher on special assignment in Ben Hayes area who is assisting algebra teachers and students. Well, that should result, right, in greater performance. And you heard anecdotally that greater performance. But really, there would be a good example of something new we've kind of doing. How do we measure the results of that and quantify for every dollar spent? What do we get out of that? And that's where academic return on investment really should be used. And our one example, and, you know, again, it's a matter of collecting the raw data and having discussions about how best to measure it. It was our attempt really to show you an example of an academic return on investment and what that might look like. But the decision about what to measure is a really good one. And we would lean on the academics to really guide us on what should we measure.
And I would agree because that's one of the questions I had about the choice of graduation rates because we had a presentation from the Department of Accountability about some data. We had some data, and given that it was applied to the EL program, we had data about the achievement results from our students in that category, our EL students. And so that would be another opportunity to look at data. But then the next question becomes, so let's say that there hasn't been sufficient growth in some of those other measures or even graduation rates. Is the conclusion then, based on that analysis, to change the investment or to modify the strategy? And I think that's one of the questions that I think the challenges of this analysis is that it seems like the logical conclusion from the straight return on investment is that the investment is flawed, but it may not be the investment or the amount of money. It's where we're allocating it, the strategy for the program. And so that's another part of this that I find to be somewhat challenging. First of all, that, and I get that, I appreciate that it was an example and I appreciated the example, but it also gives us an opportunity to challenge that example and to say, if we're using that example and that analysis that we have here today as a basis to make decisions, perhaps that's flawed in and of itself. So I kind of, that's why I wanted to explore and say that because I've thought a lot about this and looked at the, looking at the numbers and thinking about the end conclusion, the one I just mentioned, which is, does that mean therefore we cut funding for a particular program? Or does that mean we invested in a different way or reallocated or come up with a different strategy for using those dollars instead of continuing to use them in the same method? So I think I'm making sense. But these are some of the questions I have and concerns I have about that. But I also wanted to just highlight that it was only used once. It was used as an example. And if we use it as a basis for decision-making, I think we ought to be careful about that.
Good comments. Superintendent Davis.
Yeah, and I agree about being careful, especially when we talk about academic return on investment. I believe several board meetings after Mark took over, he shared with us around why the academic return on investment isn't a direct correlation, right? So we could look at all these pieces, but it's not necessarily an avenue in which we make our major decisions, as he spoke earlier about the information provided. When you look at service delivery models, specifically to ELL is what you're talking about, the team worked out that, and we looked over time around, is that model efficient? And as you look in the book, we did compare some of our numbers and outcomes to Clark. And basically, because they get the same per pupil funding. So they look like us, and then we looked at outcomes. It would not necessarily be fair to compare Boston when they get $20,000 a kid because they can put more money into certain things. How the teams arrived at it, like Deborah Beersdorf is here, they made those decisions around service delivery and looking at, is there a better model considering the model had not worked over time or yielded some results? Is there a better way to do business?
And I know, and I know we're going to hear from Deborah later, so I may ask some of these questions again. of these questions again later, but I think that that raises for me some questions about the comparison between us and Clark County because what else is going on in terms of supports for the EL students? Do they receive additional Zoom funding? What is our, what is our EL funding in general, not just from the general fund, but from other areas? And are they, are they approaching their programming in different ways? Are they providing professional development to their janitorial instructors in different ways? Again, those are questions that allow me to say, is it really comparing apples to apples or is comparing it to Clark County? Again, that just raises those questions for me as well. Is Clark County doing other things besides just having EL teachers that may be contributing to their results that they're doing differently?
And I think that's the value of benchmarking. If someone is doing something and getting the same or better results at a lower cost, what is it that they're doing? Superintendent Davis, you want to?
No, okay.
Okay. Yeah, great, great conversation. And, and I think we had to get to this point, doing all of the other things that you've been doing to be able to have this deeper conversation, which I think is really valuable and appreciate it.
Great. So that's a great segue into the cost benchmarking we attempted to do.
And just, just before we go off on a new topic, I know board members have been sitting quite a long time. I'm, I'm thinking maybe about 11 o'clock, we would shoot for having a break. That'll give us about halfway through our, our presentation. Okay, great, we're getting nods. Okay, you're, you're forewarned.
All right, let me see. Okay, got it. So one of the data points we did collect and share is our, our cost comparisons or benchmarking of ourselves to other agencies. And so this summarizes it, but again, you have the data we shared with the departments in Attachment D. And, and so shockingly, Business and Finance showed a lower cost than, than our peer group. I don't know how that worked out.
Did I hear nanner, nanner in there somewhere? Yeah, I think we heard it.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can see the other areas that compared favorably where our costs either per square foot, when we talk about custodial, or per student, when we talk about gifted and talented, were lower than, than peers. And we think that's important to recognize. Not that that meant we weren't going to reduce Business and Finance. We, we do propose that, but at least we know kind of where, how we stand vis a vis our peers. And, and just as the discussion was had on academic return on investment, really this is just a starting point for a discussion. It's just data to share, as we've talked about, to say, why do we stack up the way we do? And is there, what do those other agencies do, as, as Trustee Frankel said, maybe to mitigate or, or deliver the service in a different way? Maybe they do more training than us and less people on the line? You know, what do they do to achieve maybe some of the same results, but with lower staff? I, I would point out, when we look at special education, and so here's how benchmarking can sometimes work, right? When we looked at special, special education, we were lower per student than Clark County School District. But then on the next page, you know, and maybe I don't show up, but there was other information that indicated, yeah, it's, I'm sorry, in the, in the right-hand column, higher cost than peer group. When we used the GFOA Smarter Spending Tool that is, includes a basket full of districts across the country, we showed up higher. Well, we would need to drill down and understand why that would be, but in terms of Nevada agencies, and again, I think the superintendent made a great point, we're different than other states. So it's very hard to make comparisons to agencies in other states, but we were lower than Clark County School District, but higher according to this GFOA Smarter Spending Tool. Again, that would tell you, there's no firm conclusions you can draw from that, right? But it might mean, hey, we need to look at that. Overall metrics, one thing we did, and hopefully you saw that in Attachment D, we looked at a group, I think of roughly 10 school districts in California of our size, so enrollments of 45,000 to I think 85,000 with similar demographics. And you can see a number of comparisons there. We looked at counselor staff and we looked at total staff and we looked at class sizes. And actually, I was surprised there are only 10 to 12 school districts in California our size, for as big as that state is, but that's the case. Overall, we have lower class sizes compared to those California school districts, so that's great. Overall, we have higher staff per thousand students than those California agencies. So that's kind of interesting. But again, this was some of the data we used to talk to departments in terms of coming up with our recommendations.
And Mark, just before you go on from that, again, setting the context, one of the next steps would be then, are they getting better results than we are? Or, or are they getting the same results at a lower cost? So, yeah, we have to, and you've appropriately titled the slide, it's the cost benchmarking results, but it's not the, the achievement and performance results compared to cost.
That's absolutely right.
So, great, thanks.
And additionally, and maybe you referenced that before, and maybe that was, it was lower cost, but one of the things I'd look at in, in all of the, the offices is again, benchmarking in relation to administrative support for those programs. So we have here in the list of office student support, we have counseling, speech language mythologists, special ed teachers and aides and assistants, but I don't see any reference to any kind of comparison in terms of administrative support for similar sized staff or, or different sized staff.
All right, so now we're looking at the budget recommendations for reductions, basically, and the rebasing. We had about 4.5, 4.6 million identified for reductions. We talked about, we felt those were minor or moderate in impact. The rebasing was about 5.6 million, the contra is about 4 million, for a total of 9.6 million related to that. And when you look at the reductions, this is just trying to summarize it in a way, and we have some other slides here that we're trying to relate it to some other information. But overall, there's about 42 positions that are identified as part of these budget reductions. Six of those are, they're not really eliminating the position, they're shifting them to a grant fund. And I think four of those were GT and two of those were TOSES that are going to be grant funded, teachers on special assignment. 34 positions were other positions, 10 of those were the EL teachers. The rest of those were really central services or central administrative type positions. And two positions are really related to fiscal year 20. We're implementing a new system to track employees and input them into the system for hiring purposes. Once we get that in, we believe that should save on some staffing due to just more efficiency. So we also included a 50% reduction for district travel. That includes travel and training budgets that departments use. Has nothing to do with negotiated items or what schools are allocated. And it also included an increase in the elementary, middle school walk zones of a quarter mile.
Yes, I have a question about that and it's prevalent around our district. Major streets, so you increase it by a quarter of a mile, that's going to make kids cross McCarran, for example, Pyramid Way, for example, Pyramid Highway, for example. It just, the variables on that increasing it by a quarter of a mile in transportation is major as far as looking at the safety. We don't want a kid in kindergarten walking a mile and a quarter across busy streets. And I just don't understand why you can't look at redistricting, like say the one on the east side of McCarran and the west side, they go to the school on the other side of the major street than the, the other one. Because this could be devastating for the safety of transportation of kids. And I, I don't know how you can just make a blanket statement to increase the ES walk zone by a quarter of a mile.
I see Mr. Martin approaching. Would you like to jump in?
Yes. For the record, Rick Martin, Director of Strategic. Mr. Trustee Mayor, for, for your application on that situation, as we would address those issues in the, the areas concerned, obviously, we look at the broad aspect of what a safe pedestrian opportunity is. So obviously, anything that has major crosswalks, lights, four-way stops, those are all considered by both the city and the county as safe pedestrian opportunities. So when we are addressing the aspect of growth or, or expanding the walk zones, we look into those situations. Now, some of the questions that you asked about pertaining to districting, that is being addressed through the zoning committee and the zoning aspects, which will take into effect some of those aspects of safety and how that would be addressed. So.
Because, you know, I hate to bring this up all the time, but we've had kids going to Dilworth, was in the crosswalk and got hit by a truck.
I understand.
And you have all the safety stuff you can, but if you increase it a quarter of a mile, that's going to make kids going to school a quarter of a mile of the, it's a fourth of what they do now.
Correct.
You're going to make it a fourth more. And I just don't, I don't understand. You could put up, like Stead, they had the accident at the beginning of the school and, and you're going to increase the opportunity for things to happen by increasing it. I just don't understand it.
Obviously, in that situation, we had to look at some opportunities of how we could save from a district standpoint, and some of those aspects were increasing. Now, we did look at other districts, one in particular being Clark County, their elementary school's walk zone is two miles for, for what they deal with in their, in their daily. And, and I understand your concern.
But you know, we, we shouldn't compare ourselves to Clark County. It's flat, there's no mountain, mounds that you can't see the kid as you're coming down.
Right.
I, I think Stead Boulevard, for example, there's growth on both sides.
Correct.
And I mean, plant growth.
Correct.
And we're unique. Every time I hear we compare ourselves to somebody, even testing, we give a different test than, than this guy said, 6,000 kids in California, the, the, the way that it's administered and everything. I, I don't know. I just don't, I think we ought to look closer at that and say, we're available to increase it. And if we deem it not safety.
Right. And we do address that aspect of safety, particularly in dealing with areas that, you know, there's situations where they may not have proper walkways or things like that, then we will implement bus service into those areas so that we do have that aspect of safety covered. But obviously, as we look at the, the expansion, what areas can we safely address those in increasing the walk zones? Then we would.
Well, we should add that to this. We're at, you know, because somebody at Robert Mitchell that walks two blocks is going to say, how come I have to walk a quarter of a mile more when diet's down at Lincoln Park?
Correct.
See what I'm saying?
I, I.
So you have to have something there. And I, I, we do a good job, but we have to compare ourselves to ourselves.
Correct.
And I think a quarter of a mile for elementary students is a heck of a.
Agreed. There, there is obviously a situation where that would expand their needs and particularly the lower level, the lower grade level. So we, we do understand that and we did take that into consideration when that opportunity was presented for a cost savings.
Because even, even the death rate amongst adult, death rates is increasing at a rapid rate.
Correct.
You know, I mean, there's been, every time you pick up a paper, death rates hit in the crosswalks. You know, I mean, we gotta, we gotta think that over. And I may be the only one, but I hope I'm not, but I really feel that we've got to look at that closer.
And I appreciate the, the comments about the safety considerations. And I think what Trustee Mayor is saying is, let's make sure it's explicit to people that, that there are criteria and that those are being investigated as are redistricting, rezoning for, to make, to make those things safer. Superintendent Davis?
Yeah, and I don't think it's the intent of any, when we did this work, the intent was not to impact the safety of any child or anything would happen in the classroom. However, we were charged with bringing some recommendations to the board, not, I mean, there's things on here that I, I don't want a kindergartner walking another fourth of a mile either, right? Especially if that kindergartner doesn't have a sibling that's a fifth grader walking with them, that is a challenge. We had to just bring recommendations. So in the spirit of the conversation, it was, what are these recommendations? We don't assume that you're going to take all or nothing, but we had to bring you things for you to consider. And when they put those items on the list, there was a consideration for impacts on kids, safety and all the things, so it wasn't done lightly. So I just want to be clear and transparent to the public about that with the Transportation Department. It wasn't an easy thing to do, but we all had to put things on based on the budget. And then we, or you, will have the greatest challenge to determine what are those things to get us, because the idea is that we will not have a structural deficit in three years. That was a charge over the course and how do we arrive at that point?
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's a good, that's a good point. Remember, fifth year with Nigard. My son would be looking at the birds instead of his sisters.
Okay, point taken. Let's, let's keep going.
All right. Thank you for the discussion. Next slide, what we tried to do is put this into the context of our, we call it Executive Cabinet or major chiefs in the district, our major operating areas. And each of these areas have multiple departments and people reporting to them. But we're just trying to say, if you looked at it from the base budget reductions and where they're happening and the proposed, the, the rebasing versus the proposed budget reductions and what that total means. And then just as a percent of the base budget prior to these reductions, just to give you a flavor of where the reductions are coming from and what those impacts may be.
Now, President, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Will you just, just for the, for, for my sake and maybe for the sake of others, just take us through the, each, each column and kind of how we're the, kind of what they mean across, just across so we can follow? Because I think I got lost a little bit.
All right. That's a good recommendation. Thank you. So we, we talked about rebasing budgets and we said we are doing 5.6 million. So the first column where it says base budget reduction, that's the rebasing. You see at the end of that, it's 5.6 million. So it breaks it out by Executive Cabinet member, chief member. So Board of Trustees, the 200,000 is really related to the safe and healthy schools budget. There is 400,000 there. This would be reducing it by half. So that's where that comes from. So each of these line items is an accumulative thing. When you look at the Attachment B, we kind of summarize these by each Executive Cabinet member. So there could be multiple items like, probably Chief Academic Officer has multiple items and it would tell you what each of those items are. So this is more of a summary and the detail is provided in Attachment B. Then you have proposed budget reductions. Once again, we're talking about 4.5, 4.6 million. Those are on Attachment C. And once again, those are broken down by each chief for the district. So it'll detail what each of those are. And the last column is really just to total them up and also put in the, the FTE, which would be the number of positions that would be being reduced for each of these areas. It's really intended for a summary. Like we said, we, we can get more into the actual reductions in the prior, later part of the presentation. And when we get into those reductions, that's part of Attachment D. Everything that was recommended as a budget reduction, there's a worksheet in here that describes what that reduction is, what that impact is. And it's listed under each of these chiefs in the, in the Attachment D. Does that help?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to make sure people understood the difference between base budget reduction and then the proposed budget reduction. So that, that was it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm.
And this is just another slide, basically the same one we did before, but it gives you a bar graph. Maybe it's a little easier to read for some people than just a number. So when you look at it, from a total standpoint, operations, looks like they're giving the most. A lot of that is base budget reduction that's really related to utilities. most. A lot of that is base budget reduction that's really related to utilities. We have some utility savings, plus implementing this ESCO, which is gonna save us money. It's part that, part basic utility savings. So it breaks it out between the blue, which are the base budget reductions, versus the red, which are recommended budget reductions. And once again, this is our starting point. None of this has been approved till you guys sign off on it. And that'll be changes from here to the end of the process.
Trustee Frankel?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a quick thought, just in terms of future conversations, something that might be helpful. And I know, I think President Holland had asked for this, and I think it was a great suggestion. So for example, back on the previous slide, slide 21, when you look at the total budget reductions and the percentage of the general fund budget, there are some of these areas that also receive funding from other sources. And I think one of the things that you had suggested was perhaps identifying what the total budgets are. For example, I mean, I know that, I'm looking at the Chief Academic Officer. I imagine there's a number of different programs that are grant funded or categorical funds that would help us understand a little bit. The percentages might be different. So for example, the cuts suggested, or the base, rebasing and the recommended cuts, or the suggested cuts for, I'm gonna say, focus on Chief Academic Officer, 11.83. But would that be different if we included other sources of funding? Just to give us that sense of the implications of these cuts in the broader budget. Not that that should drive our decision making, but it puts it in a different context. So there's a way that we could get some of that information included, the general fund and additional funding sources, so we understand what these cuts mean. And I know those additional funding sources are not longer term, and we're looking at a structural deficit in our general fund, but I think it helps.
Yes, those are good points. And our intent moving forward is to provide you with all the information related to our other funds. As you said, right now, the budget deficit was the big focus, and what are we doing about that? And how are we gonna approach that? Our intent is, down the road, when we have further budget meetings, to get into the detail. We can detail out the revenues and the expenditures, plus all these other funds. And in the past, we have done it in the same format, where we combine all the other sources of fund by executive cabinet members. So we'll be bringing that forward at a future meeting.
The next several slides then really kind of compare the community survey results, and where, these are ranked order, where the community felt like cuts should be made again, based on either voting one, two, or three for those cuts, versus what we're recommending here today. So just to orient you to the slide, the rank is in the middle column. So we've ordered these in terms of the most popular, in terms of what would be cut, to the least popular. And so the most popular cut, in the admin and operations area, for instance, was cutting the number of school administrators. And so you can see what our total recommended reductions are for each of those versus the ranking of the specific option that was on the community survey, if that makes sense.
Mark, if I could ask either of you, so the number two on the community survey results was deferring purchases of buses and fleet vehicles. I know we did use some of our state funding for purchase of buses, if I recall correctly. That didn't get any reductions. Can you all just respond to that?
Yeah, this was really reduced as part of fiscal year 18's budget reductions. We have set aside 800,000 each year towards the purchase of buses and white fleet. That was reduced by one half to 400,000. We didn't restore that as part of this budget, so we just left it at 400,000. So it has been reduced by half between last year and moving forward.
Okay, that's great context. And that's, was that included in the rebasing, or that just?
No, we didn't start by restoring it as part of the budget process.
Great, good. Thank you.
I wonder, just if, Madam President, I think you make a really good point, because that was the second highest priority from the survey. I wonder if there's a way to demonstrate that it was cut by 400,000 without the number being here? Because I think it's important, you know, people are excited that their voices were heard, that we demonstrate, that we really do show that it was reflected.
So maybe we can put a note, with a written note of how we arrived at that and what we did to show.
Or something, yeah.
I agree.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And just to clarify, we, what we don't show here were ideas that are shown on attachment C is not recommended. The last column here is really no recommendation. So you will see the Internal Auditor's Office, there is a vacant position, and that's being brought forward to you with no recommendation, one way or the other. That's the board's call and our view. So just to clarify, that's not really not recommended, it's no recommendation.
I know we're going through the community survey results. It is a little bit after 11:00, and they have several more slides to go. Is this a place we could stop, take a break, and come back? Sure, okay. So I'll start collecting board members at 10:00 after 11:00. And we'll hope to be back at 11:15.
In other words, I have to hide.
That's right, you have to hide. Okay, we'll be... Why don't we go ahead and try to get started again? Let's, let's take our seats. Okay. Mr. Hayes, Dr. Green, you guys are going to detention, okay?
Madam Deputy.
Oh, I clearly need to work on getting a little respect, huh? Oh, I didn't, I couldn't find you. Okay, let's go ahead and, yes, you do. Yes, you do. Okay, Mr. Mathers and Mr. Schroeder, why don't you go ahead and continue?
Okay. So I did want to make one clarification about the format. I think I said that LT members of the chiefs would be making presentations on the recommended reductions, and I think that caused quite a stir in the back. And what I meant to say was that they'll be available to answer questions. So we'll kind of play the host and walk you through the reductions. And then if you have specific questions about a specific reduction, they'll be here to answer those questions.
Please go ahead.
So with that being said, the next two slides present the rankings of reduction ideas in the community survey in the area of instruction. And so again, these are ranked in order of how respondents gave each question a one, two, or a three. So the most popular item here was reduce the frequency and type of academic assessments. You'll notice there is no recommended reduction, just to give you a little flavor of the conversation. I mean, certainly, that was proposed as an option, and there was discussion of it. You know, my understanding is, has been that the amount of unfunded, the cost of unfunded testing is $360,000. So we looked at that. We had a discussion about the merits of that, and that's for MAP testing. So we had a discussion about the merits of MAP testing. That is not being recommended on attachment C, but it is included in the list of non-recommended options on attachment C. So just to give you an idea there, but, you know, you can see following that, again, each option for reduction in the instruction area, and then the amount of recommended cuts in each option.
Can you tell us more about what's involved in the reducing teacher professional development and training? Because I know that was a subject of discussion, both on the survey and the budget forums, the idea of streamlining. If we could hear just what that's going to entail, because that's a, that's a good chunk of money, $611,000.
So that would be, I mean, shown at the top of attachment C. There are reductions of positions listed there. And so there, our Chief Academic Officer did consider reductions or efficiencies that could be made. We can either go through them now, or I suppose later.
She's, oh, I saw you get up, but she was trying to leave the room. Chief Academic Officer Deborah Byersdorf.
My old basketball skills, right there. Yeah, you know, I try, I try. Good morning. President Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board, Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer. So I think I'd like to start my remarks by saying a big thanks to all the directors in the Department of Academics. They're behind me today. They stepped up. They were more than willing to look at reductions to their various departments that made sense when we looked at trend data, as Mark has talked about previously, but would also be able to provide support and service to our schools. I think probably one of the biggest takeaways or the biggest themes for me, as the academic officer in looking at reductions, whether it's positions or operating budgets, has been charging my directors, and in turn, them charging their direct reports, that we have to be more strategic and smarter about the support that we're providing other departments in our schools. It has to align to the strategic plan. It has to align to various initiatives that are, that fall under the Office of Academics. So anyways, that holds very true for professional development. We would like to be everything to everyone. We're just not able to do that. So, for example, as you know, we're gonna be going through a textbook adoption here soon. We've got to be able to make sure that we can provide quality professional learning to our teachers who will be implementing our world language, our secondary math, et cetera. So some things are gonna have to kind of fall off the plate a little bit, that we're just not able to support. So specifically for the Office of Academics, most every department has, has funding to some extent for professional learning, professional development, that we looked to cut back. And again, just as a team, and with their respective teams, make decisions about where we've got to put those resources and those efforts. So that is gonna take work. It's work that's happening right now, as we plan for the end of this school year and the start of the following school year.
Thank you, Deborah. Yes, Trustee Frankel?
While we're talking about professional learning, and I'm looking at the, some of the recommended cuts. And again, I appreciate the comments of the superintendent that we have to start somewhere. We have to look at opportunities, and I know this is difficult. One of the things I'm always interested in is if, the implications, and of course, I know you are as well. So if we were to eliminate, like for example, eliminating 1.7 of the principals on special assignment and the role they play with novice teachers, novice principals, novice APs, and novice deans, how will that change any expectations for the principals or at those schools? And so in terms of the role that the principal would play mentoring a novice dean or a novice AP, just, I'm just thinking in terms of the work that the principals already have. So how is that, how are you thinking about that? Because it's, because they play critical roles, and they serve a huge number of novice principals, APs, and deans. And so I just wonder about that, support for those new, those new folks in those key leadership roles.
Me too. And very much concerned about that, being a former area superintendent and a principal myself. In my opinion, it is imperative that we continue to provide support to our first-year principals, and perhaps our principals that might be struggling a little bit. So we do have a proposal coming forward, you know, working with my supervisor, Dr. McNeil, to continue to provide support to first-year principals. Deans and assistant principals, as best we can provide support, but a lot of that work will fall under the principal at the site, and I think in working conjunction with the area superintendents as well. I just don't know if we're able to continue to provide that level of support, to be honest with you.
So let me just add, in looking at it historically, it has not always been the model that we have today. There have been other models in which there was not an FTE, and we did provide service. So the thought process was return on investment, how to streamline and still provide support. And there had been models in which they did not have a full-time person assigned, and it was more an after-school versus an in-school day. So just so when we talk about the gamut, we really looked historically at how we delivered services. And because there was more money, or the Title II money went up, they used Title II funds for some of, to fund some of that, right? Well, Title II was being cut by feds, right? So we tried to look at different models that did not always hit the federal, the general budget. Okay?
Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Also, while we're looking under the cuts, what got my attention was 10 EL teachers. Do we not, do we not need that support, or?
You know, I, and I'm gonna put Janine Kelly, who's sitting behind me, our director of EL, she knows she's on notice to come up and answer some questions, too. I want to be very clear and very transparent in sharing with you that when I became the Chief Academic Officer last July, I started a conversation with Janine and her staff members about, was there a better way to provide programming, provide support to our students and to our schools and to our teachers around EL? As we progressed through the school year, and we started talking about some potential budget reductions as well, we were already going down that road. Actually, later today, one of your agenda items is a presentation by Janine on some updates with the EL department. I believe, and Janine joins me in this belief, that every teacher in the Washoe County School District should be a teacher of EL students. I don't know how good of a job maybe we've done in the past, and this is no, this is no editorial on Janine and her department. They're small, but they're mighty. But how have we provided support and built capacity amongst all of our teachers, elementary, middle, and high school, to support the language acquisition needs of our EL students? So I wanted to look at a change in model that I think could be more efficient and streamlined in terms of resources, provide more targeted assistance to schools, based on their performance framing rankings, perhaps, grad rates, perhaps, WIDA, S-Back results, et cetera, and just the general concerns of the principals and area superintendents as well. So this work has been going on for several months. I'm excited about it, and I say that to you in all honesty, because I think, we believe that this will provide a more targeted model that we will see better results for our EL students.
And I also, if I may, I also noticed that when, when the gentleman was sharing the information about where we don't do as well as peers, that this was an area that we didn't do as well as our peers with the same kind of funding. So it's just exciting to see that you're looking. I think we compared to Clark in EL, I think we did, and they get, they were getting better results and using less money. And so this is an area that, it's exciting that we're looking at it differently. That just stood out, but I see the connection.
Right. I think what, I believe what we're looking to do differently in EL, I think is probably a perfect example of when we talk about priority-based budgeting. And I think actually, our meeting with Janine, as I'm looking at Mark, was one of the very first ones we had over the holiday break, because we wanted to talk through this. I would eventually like to move away from a ratio-based model with EL and more of a support-based model around the story of the school and the needs of the school. I'm under no illusion that this is going, it's gonna be a little bumpy, likely, as we start to explain to folks what our plans are. We were just in front of the area superintendents yesterday. So this is fresh news right now, and just in front of Janine's department Friday morning. So there is a lot of work, and I know I'm probably driving Janine crazy right now with the amount of emails and text messages, but we're super excited. And I think it's gonna be a model, I know it's gonna be a model, not only for the state of Nevada, but nationwide as well. We've done our research. We continue to do our diligence to make sure that we're making good decisions. Return on investment for EL is not just an increase in grad rates. You're gonna hear more about that later today. But how are our students doing in S-Back? How are they doing in MAP? How are they doing on all those assessments that our kids take? But more importantly, how are we doing as a system to exit more students from EL services? We know if we can get them exited by the time they move into middle school, the trajectory for on-time graduation is just, it's immense. So that's the work that we're involved in right now. So I know the reduction of 10 EL teachers might have been a little, little shocking. We worked long and hard and, many, many late nights, Janine and I talking about what we thought was the best place to kind of enter in, to start to make some changes to EL programming in Washoe County School District.
Thanks, Deborah. Superintendent has...
And I just want to reiterate that when Deborah was hired as the Chief Academic Officer, she was given full autonomy. So the thought that this is coming before you now, if we hadn't had this meeting, those things would still be happening, because we wanted to look at efficiencies and how to better serve our students. And we know that at the end of the day, they post graduation rates, but the road to graduation starts in pre-K. And so when we talk about students in EL, we talk about exit rates, and what's happening when we detest... with WIDA testing. So, they've been very thoughtful about the work that they were doing, even in lieu of the budget cuts.
Trustee Frankel?
Thank you, President Tolland. And I appreciate that you're excited and I appreciate the thoughtfulness, this is no way, a statement about that. I am, I mean, I am struck not so much by the positions but by the dollar amounts, and I think that's where my concern lies. I'm not sure I'm as excited that we would be cutting back on resources for our EL students. And I'm going to be honest, John, this is one of my sacred cows, as a former EL student myself at the age of six moving to this country. I am passionate about it, but I'm also looking at the numbers that Ben provided us in terms of their results, and the results that we heard from the Department of Accountability, that 15% of our EL students in elementary school are above standard or at standard in math, and only 6% in middle school. That 15% of our EL students are at standard in ELA, and only 4% in middle school. So what that tells me is, yes, we need to look at the model, and I so appreciate the creativity that you and Janine are bringing to that conversation, but I'm also really concerned about it also implying that we need to cut back on the resources. Does it require additional resources? Do the resources we currently have in the budget need to be allocated differently to provide supports to those students? And I appreciate efficiency is, is a goal, but I also recognize that we have a huge hill to climb here with respect to meeting the needs of these students who are very vulnerable and very much in need, as well as the fact that these are often the families that are not going to show up here at board meetings or come to the budget town halls. So I want to speak for them, and I want to, and I want to emphasize that I am not, I'm wary, I guess is the word that I'm going to use, and I respect and I look forward to the presentation this afternoon, but it is of concern to me that of the 34 positions that are identified for reduction, close to, you know, basically almost 30% of those are from the EL department alone within the Office of Academics. And I want to ask myself and ask all of us to think about, as all of you have with the staff, are there other areas or other staff that we could look at for reduction before we look to one of our most vulnerable populations? So, I, again, I'm not saying this in any way to dismiss the thought and the intent and the, the effort that you're putting into it and the creativity and the long nights as well as, as your focus on wanting to improve our results for those students, but I'm, I'm, I'm wary, so that's, that's just what I'm, what I'm going to emphasize.
I appreciate that.
Okay. One more, and then let's let them keep going. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Everybody's complaining about the things that got cut. I'm going to compliment you on something that didn't get cut that was on the list, and that's the victim advocate for the Police Department, because I think that's only one person, and I think that's so, so important. In Sparks, we had it, in the Police Department, and the county probably had it, and I'm so glad that you're not cutting that, because it is so important that we have somebody in a position like that, that people that are victims can get help. And it's tremendous, I'm glad you didn't cut that.
Chief Trevino is smiling back there, so I'll sit down.
Your finished superintendent?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's go ahead with the presentation. Great conversation, and I think this is really important to take the time to, to talk about these in depth, because that's why we're here.
So really, I didn't have any more specific comments about the community survey results comparison to our recommendations here. Again, the idea here would be, we will go through the specific areas and specific recommendations later on this morning or this afternoon. So unless there's other questions, we can move on.
I have a question.
Mr. Kelly?
I was wondering why there weren't any recommend, recommended cuts to the Board of Trustees? And I say that because, I mean, granted, in the grand scheme of things, you know, a three or five or seven percent cut to our budget is very, very small, but I worry about the perception that the community would have to have no cuts from, no recommended cuts for us when we're asking so many others to do cuts. Now I know it's, it's tough, because there's only so many line items in a trustee's budget, and so I'm wondering if, if then it comes down to, you know, voluntary cuts on our behalf. And so I'll give you two examples. This year, I'm not going to be attending the National Association of School Boards Conference, and so that's with airfare and hotel and stuff, that's about $3,000 in savings that you guys weren't aware of, but that's something that I'm choosing to do this year. So wouldn't that 3,000 then be considered a small cut towards our, that, the trustee budget? And then another example would be, my family has been on the, the school district's health insurance, but I've taken them off and moved them over to my full-time employer's health insurance. So then that's also something that you didn't know about, but wouldn't that be a several thousand dollars cut that could be applied to the board budget? And so, but I'm just wondering if, if there, what the reason was for not having any recommendations, and then also if trustees want to voluntary, voluntarily cut something, do we share that with you so that you can add it to our total budget, or is that something?
So let me answer for you. I saw you put your head down, Mark. Are you wanting to take it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good. So we actually did talk about a 2% to 3% operational cut for the board and the superintendent, because we don't house a lot of stuff, a lot of the money is funneled out to the departments. Our budgets are pretty much more operational. For the exception of me, I house legal counsel, school police, so you'll see some of those things. But I don't think the staff would be making recommendations about, like, things that you want to give up, you would have to bring those to us in lieu of like what you're, like, that's individual versus the board. But we did talk about some across-the-board cuts for the board and the superintendent's operating budget. Now where you do with the operating budget is your choice, but we did actually have a discussion about that. Did I save you, Mark? You're welcome.
So then, yeah, the question then, if I, if one of the trustees does have a voluntary cut that they'd like to make for their own self, what's the process to, to get that into the budget going forward?
I'll take it.
Okay.
And I think several of us, Trustee Kelly, just for your info, several of us have made that decision as well, not to attend the national conference for that very reason. I know others of us have declined mileage reimbursement and other things, so I think individually, if folks wish to do that, they can have that conversation with the financial staff.
Yeah, as long as everybody's saying, oh, goody-goody, I don't take retirement, I don't take insurance, I don't take mileage, I don't take a lot of things, but I do go to the conference. But, so, I'm not going to cut that, I cut about five things, and I think that's enough.
So I think what we didn't want to do is get into, this trustee's not going to this conference, you make those determinations on your own, that is not our purview. There could be a 3% cut of the superintendent's and the board's budget, then you can individually determine how you choose to spend your money, but not get into, well, I go to this conference, I go to this, that's not for us to manage. Okay?
Well said. Okay.
Okay, so now we're getting to the conclusion, and this really is kind of a conclusionary slide for you. I think Mike's going to walk you through this again. We're getting down to the bottom line here.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Yeah, just continuing process, we're just trying to identify step by step where we're at. We started by saying, if we did everything the same way we'd been doing it, we'd be 19 million in the hole. We'd have a structural budget deficit. When we look at rebasing, use of contras, we're able to nip into that quite a bit. Gets it down to about 9.5 million. And we really feel like that rebasing and contras, they're not really damaging, I mean, they don't cause a lot of issues. It's really just recognizing savings that we had incurred in the past, but recognizing them upfront. So that gets you down to 9.5 million now, is where the road hits, the rubber hits the road, and tough decisions have to be made. Right now, we're gone through a process to recommend about 4.5, 4.6 million in reductions. And when you, if we do those, then we'd be at about a $5 million structural deficit. So I was just kind of continuing the process to say, we're nipping away at this thing, and we haven't got there yet, we still have work to do, and we still have some other items that we want to talk about as far as possible additions to the budget.
So in other words, I guess I'll say it a different way. If the board went with staff's recommendations here, we would have a deficit of only $5 million before we consider, or you consider additions to the budget, and also before there, as Mike mentioned, there's a couple items we're still looking at. So our plan would be to come back to you in March with recommendations on those several areas that we're looking at. But at the current point, if you adopt our recommendations, the deficit would be reduced to $5 million. One of the important things that we probably could have highlighted before, as you see, there's roughly 40 positions slated for reductions. We are proposing a way to streamline or soften those reductions, and so we go back to the board's direction to have a balanced budget by fiscal year '21. And so in light of that, we've kind of put this proposal before you, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm talking on your slide, but I'll keep talking, that for positions that are slated to be deleted, that are flagged to be deleted, if they are occupied, we would give those employees basically two years for either vacancies to pop up, so we have a lot of naturally turnover, like any agency our size, or for those persons to be placed over two years. And so no one would, none of the Protex or ESP positions would actually be deleted until they become vacant over the next two years, so we would carry forward an amount in the budget to cover those positions. We can do that, we have the fund balance to do that. And so this would, again, minimize the disruption to employees, provide them kind of a soft landing. Again, we think there's natural attrition that goes on in organizations such that by the end of two years, we would think there'd be very few people in positions that didn't have a vacancy or that we couldn't place. If there are, at that point, we would contemplate a reduction in force. And so that's, again, a way to soften the blow. Again, it's still stressful to those employees, we get that, but at least there's a transition plan here of two years that we're proposing.
Trustee Taylor, did you have a question you wanted to?
I do, I do.
Okay.
Can I just add to that? I think last year when we had the huge $40 million deficit and we took 30 million from central offices, the charge was not to hit staff, right? So we would not be having a reduction in force. When we looked at, looking at how to eliminate the structural deficit, the same mindset was used, but how do we arrive there without impacting our employees? Because we do have natural attrition, and if we can do that in a way that people don't lose jobs or we're riffing employees, I think it speaks volumes about our commitment to our 8,000 employees that we have.
I do have one now for me. Do we expect then that by 2021, we'll have people placed or attrition will pretty much take care of this? What's, what's, based upon the rate of attrition that we generally have?
Yeah, I, I, so to answer your question as, as much as I can, I sure hope so. I mean, for some of us who've worked for other agencies, who've gone through the recession and made cuts, if, I think if the, if there's really an effort to place people and to meet with those people, for instance, and learn about, okay, what's your skill sets, education, what positions do you actually qualify for? There's usually, and I think in this situation, there's 40 positions being cut, but yet there's a two-year period, I am hopeful that all those employees would be able to be placed either again through just them leaving the organization or finding other jobs in the organization, or through a kind of more proactive placement effort that, again, I think some of us have been through. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that is in fact the case, but we would certainly report every year to you about how that's going, and what we were actually able to delete in terms of positions that opened up versus what we're continuing to kind of carry, so.
Trustee Kelly?
Yeah, and I'm glad you, you mentioned that, Mark, because, well, it's true that as a district, we do have attrition, you know, most of those attrition are teachers, because they're our bigger staff. And so, I would have to say that, yes, we do want to use attrition to not fill positions, but I still want to make sure that teacher positions have the highest priority of being filled, and if it means that we maybe have to wait a little bit longer for non-teaching positions to hit the attrition where it helps our budget, that's kind of something that I would lean towards, just, just my opinions.
Please go ahead.
And here's where we had, I addressed certified positions as well, so again, we're about ready to go through our overage and allocation process in March, and so we would, you know, use that process to place the teachers where there are recommendations for reductions, for instance, for teachers on special assignment.
And this is more of a graphical presentation of what we've been talking about. Once again, less than a year ago, we were talking about a $40 million deficit when we started fiscal year '18. We were able to get that down to about 16.6, there's 6.1 in there that's really a one-time only thing related to the property tax settlement should it occur. And then you can move into fiscal year '19, now it goes up from 16.6 million to 19.1, and that's where we're talking about base recurring revenues, new revenues versus our ongoing recurring costs. So there's a little bit of a structural deficit constantly going on in that. Once we recommend rebasing and contras, all of a sudden we're down to 5 million. The little red piece there is really saying, we still got to talk about some additions that we haven't shown you yet, but if those were to be approved and the budget reductions as recommended were to be approved, we'd be about 6.3 million with a structural deficit. And from there, we'll talk about what we can do from there in a minute too, but it would get it down to that. And we still, we've talked about some other ideas that we're still looking at. We still have a number of teachers on special assignment, implementation specialists, we want to look at those. If we were to look at those and even reduce those by half moving forward, then it would get it down by another 1.5 million. So, just a nice graphical look at where we were not very long ago versus where we could be depending on how we move forward with the budget.
So, again, Mike mentioned the fact that there are a couple items that we're still looking at for the fiscal year '19 budget, and, and one of them is to review the remaining 24.3 teachers on special assignments, who've come in implementation specialists and consulting teachers. So we've tried to do as much work as we can, but there still is an item that we still need to drill down on and have discussions about in terms of how many of those teachers might, might we redeploy as online in the classrooms. And then we, and number two, there's some ideas we have that are subject to meet and confer with our labor associations, and so we have some of those ideas that just have to kind of go through that process to, to see what that materializes to be.
Can I ask, sort of along the line of things that have yet to be negotiated, health insurance. We, we have a, a plan that will expire this summer, and are there opportunities for perhaps negotiating some coverage changes that could help? Just wanted to throw that in the mix.
I think that's on the table, yes. We've mentioned additional budget requests, there are very few of them, they're shown here. We thought we could go through them when we go through area by area, but you can see them here. We have real cybersecurity issues, it's been an audit finding, so one of the additional items here is to increase the number of network analysts by two. We think that's probably still not sufficient, but at least it helps stop the bleeding there and helps address some of those issues. In terms of, really between Pete's area and mine, we have taken a re-review of the positions that are allocated to bond funds that provide support for bond projects, and we identified .7 positions that really need to go back to the general fund, that aren't working as much on bond projects as they were last year, and that is a cost of $102,000. That's not really discretionary, it's something we need to do to be compliant with IRS requirements for tax-exempt debt, but it, it's shown there. And then we have two items really that are being funded by a TIF-IV grant, and that grant is ending, and so costs are shown here as being borne by the general fund. There are four 21st Century Learning Technology coaches. We do hope to get a grant there to cover that. We're fairly hopeful of, of getting a grant, but for now, we're showing them in the general fund. I wouldn't characterize those as a ongoing cost, so we anticipate knowing in the first quarter of fiscal year '19 whether or not we got the grant for that. We're budgeting the whole amount in the general fund for '19. If it turns out we don't get a grant, we'll come back to you in fiscal year '20's budget discussions to talk about those four positions, but for now, we put them in the budget as kind of a one-time cost. And then there are four positions identified for PGS system, which is really our work program. Performance Evaluation System. Again, that was grant-funded. There are many more positions that are grant-funded out of that operation currently. We've reduced them down to four positions, and so, those costs are shown here, as is the software cost of $200,000 a year. But again, the idea would be, we would talk a little bit more about them going forward, and then, again, that is a, you know, an item for discussion and a decision by the board for each of those items.
Mark, just, just for putting ourselves sort of in context, so about $1 million of those additional budget requests, you are going to be looking, the team's going to be looking for grant funding to support. Is that correct?
I don't think we believe there's much of an opportunity to grant fund the human resources staff for the PGS system. Really, the $400,000 for the 21st Century Learning coaches is the area where we believe we will get grant funding to cover that.
Okay, got you. Thank you for that.
To the areas reductions in what we presented on Attachment D, but right now, given what we presented, if everything were to be approved, we still have a structurally imbalanced budget. We have to file a balanced budget. So, we would have to find out, how are we going to balance it? I mean, we can go back and identify additional reductions to try to balance it. Identifying additional sources of revenue is kind of hard. There are some items coming up. The Department of Taxation provides their ad valorem tax, an official pro forma. We have to adjust our, we'll adjust our budget according to that. That could be up or down, but we'll have to wait and see where that is. And then, the State Department of Ed uses those pro forma amounts to adjust the per pupil amount. So, we could see a slight increase or decrease in our per pupil amount. But right now, additional sources of revenue, we're pretty much accounting for what we believe we'll be getting. So, that one's kind of tough. You really have to look at reductions or use a savings account or fund balance to balance the thing out. As we've said, we're still in the process of looking at some other areas, the teachers on special assignment, that area. If there's anything else that comes up, then we'll certainly bring that forward to, to say, this could help, this couldn't help, whatever. But where we're at right now, this is based on our best information and what's going on right now. So, we certainly need to talk about where we're going to go to balance it and get direction from you as a board to say, where are we going to end up? As far as the timeline goes, we have to file a tentative budget by April 15th. That only really gives us a month here to, to do some stuff. If we wanted to make hard decisions right now, then we could do that before then. Hopefully, we'll be at a point where we can present to you, based on your direction and everything, something that's really going to look like our final budget by the tentative budget. If it's going to take a little longer, we certainly have that extra month to really vet, get more public input into where we want to go. So, the May hearing is a tentative, a hearing on the tentative budget. So, that's a public hearing where people are allowed to talk and about the budget, and the board has the opportunity to make changes to the budget and approve a final budget at that point in time. Right now, we don't have another board meeting scheduled before June 8th, which is the official deadline to get a budget in. So, it will probably be at the May public hearing on the tentative budget where the final budget is approved.
Can I ask a question about the April tentative budget? So, if the board gave direction to implement reductions as proposed, not saying that they will, but, and, and then the $5 million deficit still remains, just for clarification, you still have to present a balanced budget to the state, so you would just, you would correct out of ending fund balance to, to make that balance for the tentative budget? Is that correct?
Yeah, we would, right now, we have some money in the ending fund balance. We could just offset that. And then, we'll also get a better picture of where we believe we'll finish in fiscal year '18. We could do something with the opening fund balance to provide that offset also. So, there's a couple ways we could do it.
So, we've talked about some areas where staff management is working through different approaches to provide services, you know, based on our budget discussions or their own analysis prior to the budget being developed. These are a listing of some of the areas that we are looking at. Again, our hope is that these result in further savings in fiscal year '20 and '21, but we're just not ready at the moment to kind of present and quantify what those savings would be. And this continues that list. On the first-line item, we are implementing that new software system for hiring and approval of personnel requisitions, and actually, we assume that A will be launched in the fall and that B, that will result in efficiencies, and so, that's why there's one position in my department and one position in Human Resources Department that are slated for deletions in fiscal year '20 that reflects efficiencies and automation, through automation that we'll receive. And so, you know, lastly, but not, certainly not leastly, we are continuing to go through the priority-based budgeting process, and I think that'll give us a real good handle on, on some of the areas that we might want to focus on in fiscal year '20 and '21 and give you an opportunity to comment as well on programs that you think are high priority or low priority. So, we look forward to that discussion this summer. And so, with that, I think we're ready to plunge into, if you are, specific areas and the specific recommendations. And again, we'll kind of play host here and walk you through the document, which is Attachment D in your packet. And then, if you have specific questions, like I'm sure you will, the chief in that area can come up to the podium and, and answer those questions. Okay. D, D, not C?
Oh, D.
Yeah, D.
Sorry.
Okay, so, the first slide here, first page of Attachment D is simply a summary of historically the budgets in each of those chiefs' areas, and then, the change over time between fiscal year '16 and that fiscal year '19 base budget. We've summarized that also by function below. I think this is data you've seen before. Oops, sorry. And then, the next slide summarizes the base budget reductions in each of those areas, then the proposed budget reductions, which we'll focus on. So, again, we have $4.6 million of proposed reductions, and then, that gives you the total ending proposed budget for fiscal year '19 by area. And so, with that, I think we're ready to move on to the next slide, which is the Board of Trustees' Budget. So, we've talked about that. And next slide there, under the Board of Trustees' Budget is our Internal Audits Process, Office. And so, again, as I mentioned before, there is a vacant internal auditor. This function has had cuts in previous years, but we wanted to give the opportunity for Paula Ward and maybe other folks to, again, talk about this particular position. Certainly, there would be an impact to the volume of work and the kinds of audits they do if they were slashed to another position. Again, this comes on the heels of losing a, more than one position in prior years. So, I don't know if Paula is here?
Just while we wait, if I may ask a question? It says no recommendation, so that just means you guys aren't, you aren't taking a stance on that one way or the other.
Correct.
Right?
We're agnostic on that. We're going to.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
Good morning. I don't know if you have questions or if you want me to go through what the position does or what we do again. I'm sure you all know by now what we do.
Maybe you could just talk a little bit about what the impacts would be, what, what wouldn't get done if you didn't have that position?
Great. So, every year, the board, as well as the Audit Committee approves our audit plan. So, right now, being down by a total of three positions in the last three years, I have two staff now. What we originally were slated to do were operational audits. We also do student activity fund audits, but I have hired an intern through my operations side of the budget that has done that and based on risk assessment that we ran through the external auditor. We're not doing as many of those, so that's not our focus. Our focus is on operations, and that does the education side as well as the operational side, looking into things. We get requests from not only the board and Audit Committee, but from staff and other people as things come up. They see an area that needs to be looked at. So, those things, along with our, pretty much, whole audit plan has been pretty much put on hold because of that, because we're down to two positions. So, an internal auditor that, and I just started training one of the new ones. I have one that's been there several years, but I have another one that's only been there a year. So, through that training, you know, he's, he's completed one audit, but it does take time, as you know, to, to get up to speed. So, right now, I would say that they could complete maybe four audits in a year. So, the audit plan based on risk assessment that we asked for from staff and from board and Audit Committee will not be done. So, now, we have to go to a risk level where we're just getting two or three things done in a year.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Ward? Okay, and again, there's no recommendation about that, but again, that, that is an area that has had some reductions in the past, and so, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paula. And just to clarify, that is not included then in the dollar amount of 4.6 million of dollars, of reductions?
Correct.
Next area is Slide 5, the Superintendent's Office. And so, the Superintendent's Office kind of per se is composed of two individuals, the Superintendent and her executive assistant, but also included in that budget is the Office of General Counsel and our school police function. So, in the area of, turning to Slide 6, in the, in the area of Office of General Counsel, you recall that they gave up one position last fiscal year, and so, we did not look to them for a reduction. We had certainly conversations, but we felt like any reductions there would be severe in terms of what our counsel can do for the board. In the area of school police, Jason had identified two potential reductions, the deletion of a school, of the victim's advocate position that we've talked about, and then, reducing coverage at, at school sporting events and having less overlap at certain school events based on kind of attendance at those, those events. The FRC, the Financial Review Committee, deemed both of those kind of having severe impacts and do not recommend reductions in either area, both, you know, from a safety standpoint, you know, also based, based on their mandate and their mission. So, those are not recommended for cuts, but certainly, if the board wanted to entertain moving them into the other category of recommended, that's certainly your prerogative.
And then, I'll just add that Government Affairs gave up an FTE last year, too, so we have streamlined.
Okay. Vice President Raymond?
And I think this is probably more for Lauren Olin. I don't think she's in the room, but I totally agree with Trustee Mayor about the victim advocate position. I would just add the possibility of exploring grant funding for that position. The Domestic Violence Resource Center where I work has, all of our victim advocates are grant-funded. I know the cities and the county receive Victims of Crime Act, and it's possible we've already explored that, but I think one more thing to look into, and maybe we could even add a advocate with that grant funding, so.
Okay, so, I'm looking at the clock. It's, I just wanted to, to check in. It's about eight minutes after 12:00, and we have 40 pages to get through, so, Trustee Feimster, that was not directed at you.
That's okay.
It was not. I didn't even know.
It's okay. It's still important. I want to echo what both trustees are saying about the victim's advocate position. I don't think right now that anyone at this table or in this facility could actually share with us what's going on with some of our students out in the community. And the only way to even get a feel of it is to go sit in court. And it is troubling. It is disturbing. And as a site administrator, it's very hard for the site administrator and counselor to keep a hand out there on some of our students who are causing grief for their families, for the community, for themselves, and they don't want to be in this position, but someone has to do it. And I, I, we can save students. We can save students. And I'm passionate about it because my son works there, and I would have never known this. I would have never known this. I was, I mean, I knew we had problematic students, but not to the degree that, that it is at this point. And as time goes on, this is going to intensify, and I think if we take a proactive, well, at this point, it's not really proactive, but if we can, if we do something, work with both police departments and the Sheriff Department, whomever, we have to do something because this is a serious issue in our community, and I know that parents are having lots of problems. They're in there crying, begging for help. They're begging for help. And, you know, it depresses the people who work at the juvenile court system and other places that are affected by it, because sometimes, they don't know what to do. And I know that our counselors are overburdened at the school sites, so I just want us to see, I want to see us get a little bit, just a little bit more support for the people who are working at Jan Evans, the people who are at Sparks Police Department. I know they have a full-time victims advocate, but she cannot do it all. She, she is working with the schools, but it's something that, it's a position that we need. So, Vice President, thank you for speaking up on that position, and Mr. Mayor, thank you also. And I applaud our chief for the work that he's doing, but I know you need more help. There's no way that you can do what I saw just in one afternoon. It's impossible unless you're Wonder Man, you know? But it is, it's a very important position. We are losing students, and believe me, they are 12 and 13 years old. This is very, very troubling. And Superintendent, if you're working with the chief, I applaud you. Thank you so much, but I know we have to really get someone in there who can work to help the families. They are crying and begging for help.
Superintendent? Thank you, Dr. Feimster, and I think we all agree that we want to make sure that we keep that safety net that we have in place. I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, Slide 7 starts the discussion of the Deputy Superintendent's Budget, which, again, like the Superintendent's Budget, is very small. Currently, two positions in that, in that budget, and the Deputy Superintendent has proposed reduction of her executive assistant position after much discussion. The, the Financial Review Committee went along with that proposal, and so, the idea here is that the Deputy Superintendent will share clerical support in other areas reporting to her.
Thank you for that, and I know that's a difficult situation for people involved, so.
Slide 9 starts the section on the, our Office of Academics, and you've already heard from Deborah. You know, just to orient you to the slide, we tried to provide a snapshot here of each, each area's budget, which I probably should have said at the beginning. So, you can see the base budget, base budget reductions, and proposed budget reductions on that cover sheet to give you what the proposed budget would look like. This is a significant budget. We also summarized the benchmarking data that we had collected. We also summarized the benchmarking data that we had collected, noting also items for further review, so we've talked about those to some extent. We've talked about the English Learners Program, and kind of a new service delivery model there that Deborah and Janine are working on. Certainly Gifted and Talented is an area of discussion. No decision yet on potential changes there, but we just wanted to highlight that is something that has been discussed. And then, Department of Professional Learning, again, we've, I think, touched on that here already this morning, looking at different ways to provide professional development to teachers, including reexamining the number of TOSSAs budgeted in that function. And then, again, more as an example, we did do academic return on investment calculation, and again, this could be done on different measures, but we had done that on Slide 11.
Before we get to that, can, can you also talk about the Gifted and Talented, which looks like a fairly significant reduction as well?
Would you like me to?
Deborah's coming up to save you. Thank you, Deborah.
Again, good afternoon, Deborah Byersdorf, Chief Academic Officer. So, similar to what I shared earlier about conversations, starting with the EL department about a, a, potential changes to programming and support, I also started to engage Sherri DiMartino, our Director of Gifted and Talented, in a, in a similar conversation. So, so, we are, would you like me to go line by what might be easier?
Well, just in the interest of time, I think, right now, our focus would be on if you could share more information about what your thoughts are on the Gifted and Talented, and then we'll get into the academic return on investment discussion.
So, the GT department receives a substantial grant from NDE SB 544, delineates that grant. So, we worked hard this year to move more general funded positions over to that grant, so that helped us. We are also, right now, we currently have four what are called program coordinators that provide service to school within a school, SWAS, Magnet, AAP, and our itinerant services. We are proposing a cut of one of those positions, which would then mean that we would need to, whichever position was cut, we would need to have those responsibilities shared amongst the other three coordinators. We are also proposing a cut to a position at, that would serve HUG High School. We are seeing an increase in student enrollment at the GT Institute. I believe we were potentially receiving, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, an additional three allocations. We believe, well, we know that we can provide service to students with an additional two allocations, so we said that we would be able to give back one of those positions and still be able to meet GT requirements of weekly service to our kids at HUG High School.
I know one of the things that you've heard from this board is to make sure that we are providing access to Gifted and Talented for all of our students, our low-income and minority students, just the same as anyone else, and we certainly don't want to jeopardize those opportunities. And, you know, this is an area that I know the state does provide some support to. Will, will all of this, all of that 2.2, or, I'm sorry, 468, 958, would that be offset by state funding? Is that part of what you, what you were saying? This is one of those that, you know,
Right.
We heard from the community, we didn't, we didn't want to have reductions to Gifted and Talented.
And I'm gonna defer to, to Mark and, and Mike, but I will say real quickly that SB4, SB 544 funding has also allowed us to put a number of teachers into, to what we call a cohort, that are working on getting their GT endorsement or their certification, which also will meet the needs of our students and our schools as well. And I'm gonna look at Sherri and say, right now, we have about, how many teachers?
Almost 60.
60 teachers this year, and the GT department is actively out getting more teachers. So, just like my comment, all teachers should be teachers of EL students. I believe all teachers should be teachers of our Gifted and Talented. And that's gonna take a little bit of time.
Okay. That's fine, if you don't have those numbers directly, we can, we can move on. But that's a great help to hear that, thank you. Do you want to move into the academic return on investment discussion then?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't see you. I look.
I think the ELL at 10 is too much. I think you ought to shoot for half of that.
So, what I neglected to, to share earlier, trustee mayor, is that a majority of those positions that we are proposing to, to give back are, are itinerant positions that serve, in some cases, two to three schools, based on maybe a lower number of EL students at some schools versus others. So, the, the model, and we'll talk to you a little bit more about that this afternoon, will still provide service for students, but will provide more targeted service for our teachers as well. So, I absolutely appreciate your concerns, but we're, we're confident that we can still provide top-quality service to our kids.
So, it's just the ones that go from program to program?
I'm gonna look at Janine. You wanna come on up, Ben? If Janine can yak at you just for a, a little bit?
Good afternoon, Janine Kelly, Director EL. These teachers that we are talking about are assigned to either two or three schools, depending on the number of EL students there. Those students also are below the ratio that was set for our teachers several years ago. So, we might have one teacher that is at Lenz, Huntsberger, Hunter Lake, for example, and that, that would be the sites that they serve.
So, it's a big cut, then? The 10 multiplied by three is 30?
It would affect three schools, but those three schools would then also be part of the new service model, in which we are looking at our general education teachers, really understanding the depth of language development through content, because just having explicit language for 30 minutes, possibly two to three times a week, is not as effective as language occurring all day long in all content areas.
Exactly. But it's not a cut to, like, say, the one EL teacher, Robert Mitchell, let's say. That isn't cut. It's the itinerary that goes from school to schools.
Right now, those are the ones we asked for the givebacks. We do have some schools that are a reduction in students, number of students that are at their school. They very well could fall below that ratio, but right now, we're looking at just the itinerant positions as being the possibility of serving the schools they have been serving in a different way.
So, in your estimation, the 10, the deduction of 10 is okay?
You know, I think it was hard for me to give them up, I will tell you that, I'm not gonna lie. But I also want to say that I really, truly think that this will be a better model once we have it established and in place.
And, and where's it, I'd like to go to, not Vegas, but someplace else and see the model. Is there any school district, does Carson, or Douglas, or something use this?
No, Carson does not, but Carson has also been working very, very hard in getting all of their teachers' language endorsed, and all of their teachers being, going through a, what they call the high-quality PSYOP model, and then implementing those strategies within their classrooms.
So, there's nobody close by that I could drive over to Fallon, or any of these places that uses this model?
No.
You're a pioneer.
I did come from Pioneer Stock, yes.
There you go, there you go. Okay, hearing that, I will.
Thank you.
So, this will be another one of those areas that we want to, if we do go ahead and pilot this, we will want to define some success measures and, and manage along the way to make sure that we're paying attention to what the impacts are. Yes, trustee Frankel.
Yeah, and I wanted to, related, it was actually a combination of things, the, the academic return on investment page, kind of looking back to the previous page. So, I'm looking at a Page 11 in the, in Attachment D, and then looking back to Page nine. I'm confused about the number for expenses, actual expenses, $12 million, and then in the analysis on that first expenses per, actual expenses, $12 million, and then I look back on the previous page, and I see that EL is $2 million, and I know there's a reason for that difference, and I just want to understand what the reason for that difference is. And I also, for me, again, it's not about so much the positions as, as it is about an investment in our EL students, and that's my concern, is that we're reducing the investment we're making in our EL students, regardless of the model. And so, that's my concern, isn't so much how we allocate the 10 positions or other positions, but I'm, my overarching concern, I guess, as I'll, I'll hearken back to something that trustee, that President Holland said once, and I heard somewhere else, which is budgets are moral documents. So, I kind of come back to where are we investing our money? And so, cutting the money, the funds for a program which was students in need is my concern. So, I, that's an editorial comment, but going back to understanding where the actual expense at $12 million, where did that number come from in the ROI analysis on Page 11?
There's a, on the ROI analysis, it's 13 million there at the bottom of the page for fiscal year 18.
Right.
And that's really the instructional component. There's a, other components within EL, they have a testing budget, they have other support staff budget, and that makes up the difference.
Please go ahead. Do you have other questions that you wanted to ask about the academic return on investment, or does anyone have any other questions at this point? Okay, Mark has his head down, so.
I do, I do have one.
Oh, yes, trustee Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. When we look at, I'm being mindful of the, some of the comments we received earlier from the teachers at, at McQueen High School, and I know some of those, some teachers on special assignment are going away. I know there's some that'll be able to go to grants, some are going away, and then there's still quite a large number that you're still kind of figuring out and discussing. What's the determining, how do you determine which is which on those?
Again, Deborah Byersdorf, just to clarify your, your question, which ones to look to reduce?
Yeah, which ones reduce, which ones go back to the classroom, and I'm mindful that, I know that was, I think the second priority from the community feedback that we got was to eliminate those, and I'm also, it seems as though they were getting good results at, at McQueen, so I'm wondering if, if those, if some will be around, how do you determine which is which?
And again, the, the, or the public comment you heard earlier today about McQueen, so, so Ben could, Ben Hayes could certainly speak to that. So, when, when I think about teachers on special assignments, and there are different titles out there, implementation specialists, for example, right now, we have five positions that support our acceleration zone of schools, and we've made a, a proposal to cut one of those positions. That decision, that conversation didn't happen in a vacuum. I spoke with Salwa Zaki, Dr. Zaki, who leads Department of Professional Learning, and that's where those folks are housed, as well as Area Superintendent, Dr. Troy Parks, about what, what, what our service, what could our service delivery look like going forward if we needed to, to cut the number of implementation specialists? Our curriculum and instruction office, under direction of Kendra Fox, has several, what you would call TOSSAs, on teachers on special assignments. So, in talking with Kendra, it was where can we make, where can we make some reductions to still be able to provide support to our schools, for example, around our new adoption for secondary mathematics, world language, what we've done the last couple of years with adoption of mathem, or mathematics curriculum at our elementary. So, so I think I might be answering your question, but to go line by line for every position, not person, but position that's in that department, and what is the work that they do, and can that work be spread amongst others in that department? Or is it something that we just not, we may just not be able to, to do any further? Give conversation earlier around maybe professional learning, and how can we do that differently? So, this, this process took, it took a while to get to where we're at right now. So, going forward, yes, and those, at least in my office, those conversations are still happening, as we look into 1819 or 1920, where do we see we're going with some, some things that are looming maybe in the, in the future for Office of Academics, additional curriculum adoptions, for example?
Mr. Mathers?
So, so let me piggyback on that a little bit. So, there are TOSSAs spread across the organization. So, we have TOSSAs in our Family School Partnerships area, in music and fine arts, in professional learning, curriculum instruction, in, in the Chief Accountability Officer's area and so forth. So, I, I don't want to give the impression we made one fell swoop and one grandiose analysis of TOSSAs. It really, as, as Deborah's saying, it's a case-by-case basis, where we're looking at the TOSSAs in each and every area and asking, you know, the critical nature of what those, those positions do, and what could maybe, you know, we reduce and what we can't reduce. So, it's, they're across all departments virtually, so it is a case-by-case analysis.
Thanks, Devo.
Okay, continue.
So, I don't know if you want to go through Slide 10 here, but we did make benchmarking comparisons on English Language Learners, and what Washoe County spends per student versus Clark County, that, that kind of then fed through to the academic return on investment calculation. Again, this is an example, there certainly may be other ways to calculate academic return on investment. There's no one right way to calculate it, but, but certainly, you know, the, the benchmarking data was shared in our, in our budgetary discussions, and so, you can see there's, you know, quite a disparity in terms of what we spend per student versus Clark County School District. And with that, we begin the reductions on Page 12 in Deborah's area. We've talked about a lot of them. We're reducing English Language Learner teachers, this is on Page 12 again. By 10, we're moving three GT teachers to the SB 544 grant. We've reclassified a POSA, that's, I think, already happened. You know, as you heard, we make allocations of GT coordinators and teachers, and so, Deborah's proposed giving back one of those increased allocations in the GT area, and again, and keep going down the list, moving a .4 psychologist to the SB 544 grant as well. We have a professional learning consultant teacher at the bottom of Page 12 that would move to a grant. I'm sorry, 2.3 to a grant. And then, on Page 13, we have a reduction of one professional learning administrator, and there, and you can see the description of the impact there. .7 professional learning POSA, and one FTE of a professional learning implementation specialist.
I'm thinking, given the time that we have,
Yes.
We probably want to just look at some highlights, some, some major
Okay.
Things for trustees to draw their attention to, and then we can ask questions.
Okay. And so, you see the remaining reductions as well, so.
Any, any questions? Again, these are all very painful, all of these, all of these proposed reductions that affect students are, are painful for us to consider, and we appreciate the willingness to look objectively at them by staff. Okay, where are we now?
So, Slide 14 would be the Office of Accountability. We have on Page, on Slide 15, one recommended reduction of three of those assessment algebra coaches that you heard about at the public comment. What we are not recommending is a reduction to the MAPS testing.
Okay. And I, I just want to echo, when we hear about the great results and impact that's occurring as a result of those math interventionists, I would, I would hate to lose that really positive impact, because math is certainly an area where we want to be strengthening our grade-level proficiency and, and demonstrated competency, so I am, I'm concerned about that, as I know some others are.
Can I just add something?
Yes, Vice President Raymond.
I'm not sure it completely relates to that, those algebra coaches, but I recently visited the university and their Nevada Teach Program that is training and working with, you know, creating future math teachers and science teachers, and that is a new program, and those graduates are just starting to come out, and I, I think that could result maybe in seeing reductions even more in the future, where we won't need to have as many of these intervention positions maybe, maybe. So, that's not really relevant, sorry to take up time.
Okay. Slide 16 begins a discussion of the overview of the Office of Students Support Services. This is a wide-ranging department, as you know, under Dr. Green. I will, now that trustee Mayor's in the room, I will highlight, quote unquote, "one reduction" that probably merits a discussion, and that is a reduction of four and a half counselors. One of the bits of information we provided was on slide 18. Again, that's a cost benchmarking comparison, and this is the comparison we made to a peer group of California school districts. I know this is tiny print, but we did tally up, and this is from the California Department of Education, the Norver counselors, psychologists, librarians, social workers, nurses, teachers, and other administrative staff at each of those districts. And then we've averaged them at the bottom. At the far right, we looked at student-to-teacher ratios. So the average student-to-teacher ratio for those districts in California was 22 versus our average of 18 when we look at all funds, or 18.6 when we only look at the general fund, CSR and special ed fund. We did look at the student-to-counselor ratio there, and so California school districts have survived without the complement of counselors, or the average number of counselors per student that we have. So they have one counselor for every 964 children versus ourselves. That's quite a bit lower than that in the 300 range. And then Clark County, we also made a comparison of, they have one counselor for every 521 children. And then we calculated as well, counselors per school. So again, this is just benchmarking information that tells you, hey, you know, you might want, we should look at this. This is an area worth looking at and understanding how these California school districts' service model, you know, operates. It's not a, you know, there's not a right or wrong answer. If, if the school district makes a policy call or a conscious decision to have higher counselors per, per student than these other districts, that's totally fine. We just are sharing the information. Out of that, though, there was a proposal to change the staffing allocations at elementary schools slightly. Currently, our larger schools receive one and a half counselors per school, and all the other schools get one counselor per school. So we, the proposal was to go to a flat one counselor for every elementary school, and that would save four and a half counselor positions. And so.
Mr. Mathers? I do recall, and maybe Catherine Loudon was one who brought to our attention at one point, the, the School Counselors Association of the United States has very different ratios. And I, I would rather be going in the direction of having more school counselors and closer to the, to the national recommendations than to be resembling the, the larger districts that have, that have lower staffing. So I, again, I know you're bringing forward the recommendations, and it's for our consideration, but I, I think that that's a dangerous place also, just like with victim advocates and others. Social workers and counselors in schools prevent many other problems, and we know we're, we're working with family systems that have pretty dramatic needs. Mr. Mayor?
You know, I, I have to echo that. And I, I also have to ask, do you take the middle school counselors, which there's three of them in a middle school? And like, for example, yesterday, I was at Clayton. The sixth-grade counselor has the students that were sixth graders to be at Peavine. They're now housed at Clayton. So if you, if you include them in that ratio of number of students per counselor, it's going, may it be, you know, not, not fair, because one counselor, 35, let's say, let's say 300, I think it's not that much. But that as compared to, let's say, what's the largest elementary school? Probably out in Spanish Springs High School. So they have 800 for one. So if you're adding them all together to come up with a racial, it's not true to fact of how many students per counselor. You see what I'm trying to say? Because some places, they really do need one and a half. And I imagine that your department has done that in the elementary. But I'm, I, this is to be penny safe and dollar short, because you get so much out of a counselor. You know, yesterday at that Clayton, all three of the counselors did the duty out there during lunch hour. You know, granted, that's a great time for counselors to be out there and talk to the kids and everything, but they are ambassadors, and they work with these kids, and they find out problems. And then we've got social workers, thank heavens. They can refer them to social workers that can help with family problems, get them help. I, I really think counselors, four and a half, that's too many to cut. It should be going to nine, double four and a half.
So I want to add that, I probably was a proponent of not putting counselors on here, but if the idea was that we were going to put everything up to give you options, it wasn't that that's what our pick was. It was here are all the things we considered. And so it's just a consideration, because everyone had a sacred cow, ELL, like, so we had to put everything up.
Yep.
And then you all get to make some tough choices.
We understand.
Do you have enough counselors?
And, and we value your opinion, Mr. Mayor. We do. And I know staff does as well. Let's keep, oh, yes, trustee Frankel, and then we'll keep going.
It's actually just a data question. On page 16 on the chart, I'm looking at the base budget column, and I'm scrolling down to special ed, and I noticed the FTE number, and I know that's got to be wrong. It says .2 on mine, and so I'm wondering if, what's the, what are, what is the FTE for the, for that?
This, excuse me. Good question. This particular line, it's really trying to capture our transfer to the, to the Special Education Fund. So it doesn't recognize all the teachers there. There's just a small staff that's in the general fund coded to that particular area.
Thank you for explaining that. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead. Did, did you want to add something, Dr. Green? Okay, all right.
Just here to answer a question.
Okay, let's keep going then.
Can I just add something on Dr. Green's for parent university? The, the $30,000 cut, they rebased 30,000, and then they put another 30,000? And I actually don't believe that that 30,000 should be there, because that would be a total of $60,000 less to get the work done, and they did do 30,000 from the rebasing portion of the budget. So I need to put that on public record.
Superintendent Davis? I also, Mark and I met yesterday. We also have two other ones we want to just bring to the attention of the trustees regarding the rebasing, regarding the violence intervention operating in their safe and drug-free schools. It's under the rebasing, under Attachment B, and it's also to add to the parent university, the family school partnerships operating. That's in the same situation as parent university, where it was rebased 10,000, and it's also cut for 10,000, which will impact services. Thank you.
So it sounds like there's a couple in there that may need to be backed out of the recommendations.
Just because they got rebased cut, and they're such small budgets, and then they got cut again.
Yep, no, that's good. Glad you brought that up. Thank you. Okay.
We'll clean that up.
Okay.
The next item is slide 21, the Office of School Leadership, which really includes all the schools. This one's an easy one. There are no cuts proposed. Slide 23 begins a kind of review of the Chief of Staff's area. Again, under, under Chief of Staff are many different kind of programs, including IT. There were base budget reductions, and slide 23 is shown, however, and really that reflects the PC refresh program. There are no proposed reductions to staffing. Slide 24 is the Chief Ombudsman and Strategy Officer. There is one proposed reduction, and that is a secretarial position on slide 25. Slide 26 is our Communications Area. We have one recommended reduction on slide 27 of a Volunteer Services Coordinator. And you can see the described impact there. Slide 28 is the Business and Finance Office. We are proposing reductions in total of 2.35 in Accounts Payable Clerk in fiscal year '20, a position in our Position Control area, and then the rest are shifting to bond funds. Slide 32 is our Human Resources Department. Again, two reductions, much for the same reasons as Business and Finance. Slated for fiscal year '19 would be a reduction of a HR analyst that's a vacant position currently. And then in fiscal year '20, again, if that new software system's successfully launched, which we totally believe will be, we have one HR tech position slated for a reduction in next fiscal year's budget. Slide 34 is our many functions and departments under our Chief Operations Officer. That area has been cut heavily in prior years, and that was a consideration here. And so we are proposing a reduction of only one position. That position's currently vacant. And then under slide 39, our district-wide proposals. These were ideas from the Finance Office. Primarily included here then is the reduction of our travel and training budget district-wide, except for travel and training budgets at the school level of 50%. So that reduces our travel and training budget by approximately $400,000. And then another proposal from our superintendent is to reduce one of the five area superintendents. That concludes the reductions. And then the next set of slides on slides 42 and 43 are additions to the budget. We've talked about some of them. I'll, I'll stop and see if you want to go into those anymore.
Questions at this point? We did hear about those additions already. I want to take a stab at maybe summarizing some of the things that we've heard that perhaps are areas that you all could, could at least make sure are considered. We've talked about ELL teachers and just making sure that we would be able to monitor impacts and make course corrections if necessary. I think there's a lot of concern and appreciation for the strategic thinking and appreciation for trying some new strategies. And again, just a concern that we do not negatively impact proficiency and, and growth for those students that would be affected. We talked about safety and walk zones, and I think Mr. Martin gave us some good input on things that were going to be considered if there was an increase in student walk zones, including rezoning kids so that they weren't having to be put at risk of having to cross major intersections, et cetera. And of course, things like lighting and existence of sidewalks being a feature. And I think what I'm hearing is there would be some defined criteria for some of those changes in, in walk zones. We also expressed some concern about the gifted and talented, and again, appreciate looking at it strategically with some, some new ideas. That's an area where we did hear from families at the budget forums and in the community budget survey that that was an area that people were nervous about reducing our investment unless we can provide ways and, and look at ways to have better impacts from a smaller investment. We also heard concerns about counseling staff, and maybe just want to see if we can have some ideas from our counseling team, Catherine Loudon's office, about are there ways that we can redeploy or make sure that we don't have any, anyone suffering from even further impacts in counseling? I, you know, personally, I don't think we have enough counselors now, and I'm, I'm concerned about that. And then we also heard board members talking about concerns with regard to the math interventionists. And I don't know that it was necessarily specific to that, but just making sure that we're providing adequate supports in those areas, such as with new principals, new assistant principals, new deans, and in things like algebra, where we don't, we don't see us falling back and, and losing ground that we have been able to improve on. So any other areas that board members want to, want to raise for staff to maybe see if there are some alternatives that they can look at? Trustee Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So I had a question on the Volunteer Services Coordinator as being a position to reduce. On the impact, it said that, you know, some of the duties will cease. An example of that would be community outreach and nonprofit board membership. So community outreach and nonprofit board membership, those are two areas that I could, I could stomach having a reduction or a ceasing of duties. But I'm wondering if a Volunteer Services Coordinator position going away, would that impact or cease the volunteerism that's happening actually in the classroom? And so that's an impact I'd like to know a little bit more about, because I, you know, I think our volunteer services are extremely important. Could the Communications Department take on and keep that going with the loss of this coordinator? So I have some questions around that, that reduction.
For the record, I'm in pain Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer. So without a doubt, if we remove that position, then we will see a reduction in service level that we currently provide to existing volunteers. What we're looking at is some of the work that is currently done would go away, so you're absolutely right. Trustee Kelly, the community outreach, the nonprofits that were currently part of, you know, where we have lots of relationships with nonprofits and board membership, that would stop. We currently write grants that help support some volunteer programs. We wouldn't have a grant writer in that team. We would try to maintain the volunteers, the core piece of the business, which is getting volunteers into schools. That would be our priority. So the, the nice-to-have would probably go away, but the volunteers in school would be our priority, as would retention of those volunteers. Some duties would be transferred. The bulk of the duties would be absorbed by one existing staff member, depending on the capacity. Some would go to Communications Department. The, the programs that would probably lose their support would be, we currently write a grant, and we have a volunteer who works on the Kickstart Program. So if you remember, that was the State Treasurer's Office a few years ago, had a program where it encouraged parents around college saving. We work with parents to make sure they avail themselves of that money for their children. So that's the kind of thing that probably would disappear. We currently have the Service Enterprise certification. I remember coming in front of the board a year or two years ago. We probably wouldn't be able to renew on that or gain that again, because the staffing level probably doesn't meet volunteer management best practices. So as with all these cuts, there are implications, and I think, as the superintendent said, it's just really difficult decisions for the, for the board to make. I don't know whether that completely answered your question, trustee Kelly, but that would be, our focus would be to maintain volunteers in schools, but other things would be reviewed.
Other trustee questions or comments at this point? Again, great information that I know everyone has put a lot of heart and soul and thinking into a very unpleasant task that all of us are faced with at this point. I don't know, yes, trustee Frankel, you want to make some comments?
Actually, I just had a, I'm hesitating to make it, because it's a very unpopular position. And I very much appreciate, this, this is a huge amount of work and a lot of thought that's gone into this. And, and I know these decisions are never easy, having been a part of the county when, when we had to go through decisions like this. And one of the things that I know we explored there, prior to even considering eliminating any positions, were things like salary freezes. And I know that that's not necessarily an option in some of our contracts. option in some of our contracted areas, but I'm, I'm thinking about some of the areas where we don't have necessarily association contracts or union contracts. And so exploring, for example, some of the higher-level administrator positions, those that aren't unionized, those are exempt, options around that. I don't know what the rollups are, or what, what those expenses are, because I don't actually know how much they increase year to year. So that's an area that I think before we start considering cutting positions, particularly those in schools, and that affects students directly, that might be something for us to take a look at as, as an option, because I think, the, the other piece that I look at is when I did a little calculation, about close to three-quarters of the positions that are identified for removal cost the district less than $80,000 a year, and I think if we were to eliminate positions at a higher level, we'd probably be saving a couple of positions, and get more bang for the buck, as they say, if we were to eliminate higher-level positions, and I know there's one that's been, that, that's identified. And so I am always interested in looking for those options so that we can, we can preserve the positions that have the closest and most direct impact on the students. I know that's the number one criteria that was used, and I know that some of the comments that I'm making are not popular among employees or some employees, but I think when I look at the criteria, the, and I know one of the things you said at a previous budget discussion is that we have to look at this objectively and not from the lens of our own personal need. So as someone who's been, has experienced, I know how challenging it is to be laid off, I was, and I know what that's like, and so when we talk about reductions in force, that's why I always like to think about ways that we can, we can look at some of the higher-level positions in the organization with a critical lens, not necessarily for reduction, although I'd like to look at that a little bit more carefully and encourage that, but also things like freezing salaries at a certain place, particularly at a certain level, perhaps me, over $120,000 salaries a year for, for, for those positions. So not a popular thing to end with, but I wanted to throw that out because I think that needs to get said. Thank you.
Superintendent Davis?
So I'm just going to say that the executive staff did not take raises last year, they all were frozen, and they continued to do the work after the $30 million cuts, they added to the plate, and all agree that they would not have raises, as we know, and even for this year, that was an agreement that was made, so I think that the executive staff has been very cognizant about that and what that looks like as it relates to the work they're due and the workloads and the caseloads.
Thanks, thanks for sharing that, because I don't know that everybody in the public, and all of us knew that, so thank you to all of them. Another, another thing that's also something that is a band-aid, but it still helps, is extending vacancy freezes. You know, if, if we can get by without a position for three months, can we get by without that position for five or six months? And I know you all look at that on an individual basis, but sometimes those are things that can help. Also, I had sent a note about take-home vehicles, I had some constituent concerns about take-home vehicles, that might it be worthwhile for us to move towards mileage reimbursement for folks rather than having the lifecycle cost of an assigned vehicle that may only travel, you know, 5,000 miles a year, just, you know, again, things to look at. We mentioned the health insurance coverage, also not popular to, to adjust health insurance coverage, but I know you always look at that. And are there other, other comments before we close today? I know, I know folks would love to have us give you direction to implement all these reductions, I don't know that the board is ready for that, but I, I would welcome any, any motion or direction or other comments that board members have. Trustee Kelly?
I know there was mention that there is the land up at Incline Village, and so I'd like to know if there's any other land that's potential for sale, I mean, the market is, we'd probably get as good a deal on land now than we probably could ever hope to, you know, unless it keeps going up and up, which it could, but that's something I'd definitely like to know, is what other land besides the incline is available for a possible sell.
Other comments? Is there any direction that we would be comfortable giving staff at this point? And I know that it's not necessary that we, that we have action today, but I know that you would certainly appreciate any direction that we have. I think perhaps we could, with those comments that have been made, we could just have a motion, if someone's willing to make it to, before, I'll let you speak before we do, to, to continue to look at the areas that you've identified and to come back to us at the next meeting, next budget workshop with a, with an update. Superintendent Davis?
I just want to point out clarification, and I could be wrong, but land sale goes to special funds, not general funds, so it would not, right, like it wouldn't, just so we're all on the same page, by rules, not because of us, there's rules around the sale of land, and it would go to special funds, so it cannot offset the general fund.
Trustee Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me, I think there are a number of things that we've all discussed that we'd like another look at, so for me personally, it's hard to say, hey, let's just approve this and go, I mean, whether it's, it's the impact of, you know, really being careful about those walk zones, the, the concerns mentioned about counselors, you know, that's four and a half positions, and just some other things, some adjustments that I think on the, on the student support side that we're in, but that shouldn't have been in, so we don't really have a number, so to speak, or impact of that, so I think that at, at this point, I don't, I don't know that I'm comfortable making a motion and moving, moving, I mean, most of the recommendations I'm just fine with, but I think those ones that we've mentioned, and some other areas to perhaps even look, look to that might make a difference and, and so on, and just take to look at the impact of freezing salaries, for an example, because you've already done that, so let's take a look at, I mean, any of those things might give us a, would give us a, a better number, at least, at least from my standpoint.
Okay. So I think the sense of the board has come back at our next workshop, and when is that planned for, do we have that set yet?
So we, we'd actually, I don't believe have that scheduled, but we would, I mean, look to the second half of March, if that works for you.
Okay. Okay, and then at that point, you'll have more information and be able to update some of the numbers that we have, and at that point, we'll have to get serious about adopting a tentative budget, and we, we will do that, you have our commitment, and again, thank you so much to everybody for a tremendous job, very much appreciated. Do we have public comment to close out? No public comment? Okay. All right, then we will consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.